councillors please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham, councillor Hammond and councillor Matic will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that councillors Cunningham, Hammond and Matic be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Any other apologies? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I move that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the confirmation of minutes please. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,649th meeting, held on Tuesday the 25th of May 2021, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,649th meeting of council, held on the 25th of May 2021, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, I would like to draw to your attention the item on our agenda, public participation, where Mrs Carolyn Robinson will be discussing with us Beyond DV's Pathways to Hope programme. Mrs Robinson. Welcome, Mrs Robinson. You have five minutes, which commences when you do and you may stand and sit, whichever is your preference. Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, I would like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today and pay my respects to leaders past, present and emerging. My name is Carolyn Robinson and I'm the founder and managing director of Beyond DV. It is an honour to be able to address you here today. At 5am on the 1st of May 2017, my family and the life we knew changed forever. The phone rang, it was a police officer from the Morningside Police Station that had my daughter with them. She'd been assaulted by her then-partner. Words no parent ever wants to hear. Accompanying my daughter to court over six months, I was overwhelmed by what I saw. So many women from all age groups, all walks of life and many cultural groups, all impacted by domestic violence. It was this experience that compelled me to find a way to use my professional expertise and skills to support women and children who had survived domestic violence. So Beyond DV was launched in January 2018. Our focus is on providing unique recovery programmes, which we create to meet the needs of both the women and the children we support. We found a large gap in existing services in this area. It's a critical time for families after support from crisis services decreases dramatically and they are often left to rebuild their lives alone. I would like to express my sincere thanks for the incredible support our organisation has received from the Brisbane City Council, from the Lord Mayor and Lady Mayoress, our local councillor Lisa Atwood and other councillors, as well as the many staff that we have liaised with over the past three years. The turning point for Beyond DV was when we successfully tended for the lease of a council facility. Our centre on Brisbane's south side has given us a place where our women and children often refer to it as their second home or their safe space. Aside from running our programmes from this space, we're also able to provide practical support, advocacy and referral to other services and organisations, legal advice, food relief and access to other donations, wellbeing classes, weekly peer support morning teas and community groups. We have created a one-stop shop, a community hub where women can feel safe, supported and social. Families often visit our centre multiple times a week. The Brisbane City Council also funded the pilot of our Pathways to Hope programme in 2020/21. This programme came about after we identified that one of the main barriers to DV survivors moving forward was their lack of financial independence and clarity around what their future lives could look like, which could also have a significant impact on their ability to maintain secure housing. By providing our women with opportunities to engage in goal-setting, financial counselling and career mentoring individual sessions, they can start to map out a direction for their future life. Women are guided to explore options for study and employment and are supported with enrolment in courses, some which are run from our centre. Women can also access employment support such as resume writing and interview techniques. The small but highly dedicated Beyond DV team regularly checks in with our women to discuss their progress with existing goals, new goals that they'd wish to set and barriers that may have emerged. Over the year, our programme has also evolved. Often when women engage with our organisation, fortunately they're already studying or they're still employed. For these women, our focus is to provide appropriate support to help them maintain their current employment and studies. Our social worker provides advocacy to meet the needs of our families, thus helping to relieve their stress and to reassure them that they're not alone. The addition of a DV councillor to the team has been a game changer. Her support of women when they are struggling with legal issues, ongoing impact of trauma, concerns with their children, has helped to keep them focused on the goals that they are working towards. To hear the women at our weekly morning teas chatting amongst themselves about their goals, career aspirations, current employment opportunities and study options they're pursuing is bringing more positive vibes to our centre. Hope is real. The major goal for our organisation moving forward is to make the Pathways to Hope programme more accessible to women across all of Brisbane. Travel costs to visit our existing centre have certainly been a barrier for some of the women we support, as well as for other organisations that are wanting to refer clients to us. We have identified a suitable north side location and are also exploring locations in the west and east, in the hope that sometime in the future, we will secure additional funding which will allow us to extend our programmes and services into these areas. I'd like to leave you with a story of courage and hope, which is an example of the positive impact that the Pathways to Hope programme has had on real lives. A mother of five children came into our organisation via our online support group, which we created during Covid lockdowns last year. Our mum then came along to a weekly peer support morning tea at our centre and was emotionally overwhelmed to connect for the first time with other survivors. Not long after, she participated in our Time Out Personal Development workshops, where her confidence and self-esteem began to return. Our mum then engaged in goal-setting, financial counselling and career mentoring sessions as part of our Pathways to Hope programme. She decided that she'd like to become a teacher aide. So we enrolled her in the CERT3 education support course, which is run from our centre in partnership with a registered training organisation. Our mum completed the CERT3 in record time and started working casually at her placement school. This year, she accepted a five-day-a-week role at another state school and has now almost completed her CERT4 qualification. Her financial struggles before securing employment had impacted significantly on the quality of life that she was able to provide for herself and her five children. They are so proud of their mum and her achievements.
Right, thank you, your time has expired.
That's it, thank you.
Can I please call upon the Lord Mayor to respond? Please take us as you would like.
Well, thank you so much Carolyn for coming in and for sharing or updating us on what you've been doing at Beyond DV, how you got into it and also the lives that you're helping to change. The first thing I wanted to say is to thank you personally for what you have given to supporting other DV survivors. It is, I know it is a tough job, I know that. I think, I'll actually quote my wife in this case, Nina compared it to the Sin Eaters, where effectively you're, when you're engaging with domestic violence sufferers and survivors, they're dumping a whole lot onto you personally and that has an impact on people that work in the sector significantly. And you want to help each one of those individuals and I know that you do an amazing job, your organisation does an amazing job in what you're doing there at Lilian's Place. It was an honour to be with you when we were able to officially open Lilian's Place, together with the local councillor, councillor Lisa Atwood and also Fiona Cunningham and other supporters from council that were there. To see what you've done with that space, which was, I must admit, quite a dingy space when you took the keys over and to see how you've transformed it and you go in there now and just see what an amazing, safe, welcoming space it is. It's a credit to you and your organisation for what you have done. As you pointed out, we were able to support your programme with through our Pathways Out of Homelessness grant and that was a $3 million programme which we were able to support a number of organisations across the city that were not just trying to put a Band-Aid on the issue of homelessness, but to provide genuinely a pathway out. And your programme is all about doing that, making sure that people have a financial plan so that if they are in a situation where they're facing financial insecurity, and we know that in most cases, people escaping domestic violence are facing financial insecurity, that they actually have the opportunity to talk to someone, to sit down and work out a plan and then get that plan into place so that they can effectively cut that attachment with their abusive partner and move on to a safe, separate life as a survivor with that support around them. And so, I understand that so far you've been engaging with over 100 different women and that 91 of them have been involved in the programme. And that, so that's 91 lives that you've touched and also their families and children, their friends through this programme and it's just fantastic. So this is exactly the type of thing that we want to support through our Pathways Out of Homelessness programme. I was visiting the Wesley Mission recently and they were telling me about the rise in women sleeping in their cars, often with young kids, and in many cases it was because they were escaping a situation of domestic violence or they had a relationship breakdown. And so they're the ones that don't have that financial security that you're helping and targeting. In addition to our initial support, which was 102,000 for that first stage of the project, I am pleased to confirm that we have identified an opportunity to provide an additional $289,545 in funding for your organisation over the next two years so that you can continue that programme on. I know that will change more lives and provide you with that little bit of extra support you need to keep that wonderful programme going. So thank you so much for coming in and we support what you do and we thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mrs Robinson. Mr Pearce will now assist you. Councillors, we've now come to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question this afternoon is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, last week we heard that the state government commissioned a feasibility report in 2016 into a potential green bridge linking suburbs east of the Story Bridge. Can you please update the chamber on what funding has been allocated by the state government since that time and what progress has been made since the state government finalised the report five years ago?
Councillor Murphy.
Oh well, thank you very much councillor Owen for the question and thank you Chair. Well, in the last week, we've seen extraordinary scenes Chair. A long-awaited report into a green bridge from Bulimba to Tenerife, commissioned by the state government, released by the state government, with state government ministers calling for it to be built and not a dollar committed to it by the state government. Chair, if the Premier will not commit to this white elephant bridge, then why should Brisbane rate pay us? Now, let's be very clear about what this July 2016 report finds, a report that Minister Bailey's own department refused to endorse. The Bulimba to Tenerife Bridge has an estimated cost of $200 million and that's before considering significant property resumptions required on either side of the river. And the last time I checked, there wasn't a lot of cheap land going in Bulimba or Tenerife. And what do we get Chair for our $200 million? Well, we don't know because the report makes no mention of a cost benefit ratio. And will this bridge have tens of thousands of pedestrians and cyclists using it daily? No, the report estimates around 3,000 daily users, a far cry from the 12,000 that use Goodwill Bridge each and every day. Now, the last time the state government built a green bridge, the Kirilpa Bridge in 2007, it cost $63 million. The Goodwill Bridge in 2001 cost $23 million. With a $200 million price tag, no wonder Ministers Grace and Farmer have been too embarrassed to take the Bulimba to Tenerife Green Bridge to cabinet. On top, if we were to consider an opening bridge as opposed to the 30 metre monstrosity that councillor Cook and her state colleagues would like to inflict upon Bulimba and Tenerife residents, we would see an operational cost of at least $200,000 annually. But let's talk about the 30 metre high bridge because this is what I call the worst-case option. This bridge would require a 30 metre clearance, the same as the Story Bridge, and this is a clearance required by the state government, not by council. This enormous bridge would leave residents living in its shadow, destroying the amenity of communities on both sides of the river. Hardly an accessible bridge for those families living with a disability. It would be over half a kilometre in length and would need an aggressive 5% grade and significant ramping on both sides. The ramps and structures on each side of the river to support a bridge of this size would be very, very significant. Now councillor Cook and Ministers Grace and Farmer, do they want to see green space taken up in Tenerife and Bulimba by this gargantuan bridge and its approaches? How many properties do they want to see resumed as a result? Okay, so let's not do the 30 metre bridge then. What is the alternative to this worst-case 30 metre option? Well, the report says there is an option for an opening bridge and we'll call this the even worse option. What kind of opening bridge does it recommend Chair? It has no recommendations for which you can choose, but it does outline the safety, cost and operational impacts of each. All would have significant operating costs in excess of $200,000 annually, as I said, but it would also have noise impacts with heavy machinery built into the bridge and safety risks for pedestrians and vessels navigating through. Now, I note in the media the comparison with the Winnetworth Bridge crossing in Auckland. Well, this is a poor comparison Chair because the Winnetworth Bridge is 100 metres long, which is 84% smaller than the 645 metre bridge proposed here, so it's not really comparing apples with apples. In fact, the only comparable bridge in terms of length that the report considered was the 670 metre Gustave Flaubert Bridge in Normandy, France. And I have a picture of the Gustave Flaubert Bridge. Here it is. Here it is. What do we think of that? So Chair, this is a tower of terror and those who want to enjoy the river lifestyle in Bulimba and Tenerife, I don't think would want that kind of a structure near their homes. To me, it looks like the Eye of Sauron. So the answer Chair to councillor Owen's question is that the state government has allocated no funding to a project that they commissioned a report for. They've done nothing with the report in five years. It's been gathering dust in a drawer. The only green bridges being delivered in Brisbane are being delivered by the Shrima Council, Chair, okay? Can I suggest to councillor Cook, to Minister Grace and to Minister Farmer, asking Labor councillors to grandstand on a state government issue, that she asks them, where is the funding for the Cross River Ferry? Because councillor Cook desperately wanted to make the Bulimba ferry free and what was Minister Bailey and Translink's response? No. So councillor Cook couldn't convince her state Labor colleagues to spend $250,000 to remove fares on the Cross River Ferry.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Does she have any hope on a $200 million green bridge?
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week, these pictures of the toilets that bus drivers are being made to use were published. They are disgusting. There are rusty screws in the seats, stains and dirt everywhere. It's clear that this LMP administration does not care about Brisbane workers. It's out of sight, out of mind for this Lord Mayor. So Lord Mayor, why have you neglected to maintain toilets for councils' bus drivers?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the question. First of all, I reject the assertion that has been made. We have not refused to maintain toilets at all. And it is quite an inaccurate statement that has been made here, but...
Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
We have an ongoing programme to not only maintain toilet facilities for our bus operators, but also in our parks, but also to progressively upgrade and replace them as they need that to occur. And so it is the case that there's an ongoing programme of investment in these kind of facilities and we have always done that and we will always continue to do so. What councillor Cassidy is doing is yet again, because his approach to the role of leader of the opposition is so laissez-faire, he gets his homework done by the unions each week and he asks them, what questions should I ask in question time today? And they dutifully serve up something each week for him to ask about. And I just think it is not the right approach that an alternative administration, or so-called alternative administration and a so-called leader of the opposition should be taking to their job. You actually need to do better than that. You actually need to do your own homework and not get questions written for you by union officials. I wonder what the TWU union officials are going to write for you? Because we've seen how they approach their members' funds, we've seen the disgraceful actions that have been published yesterday about how unions use their own members' funds and misuse their own members' funds. And we also know that unions like the RTBU effectively fund Labor campaigns. And so this group over here is a wholly owned subsidiary of the union movement and it doesn't surprise me that they ask questions that are fed to them by the unions. You see, they...
Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence. The Lord Mayor.
They don't actually talk much to real people, even when they organise rallies on curbside collection. When you discount the Labor councillors and then the Labor state members and then the Labor federal members and then the Labor staffers and then the Labor branch members, there's precisely zero people at their public rally. And so they wouldn't actually talk to a real person about these things. They take their orders from union bosses, they take their orders from their colleagues up at George Street and that is just a pathetic way to approach the job. We take our bus drivers' jobs very seriously, we treat them with respect and we have invested more than any other administration in improving facilities, whether they be...
Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor's answer to be heard.
Whether they be newer buses with more safety features, whether they be newer bus depots, whether they be upgraded facilities and a whole range of other investments that we will continue to make in our fleet and in the safety of our drivers and passengers. Our record is very clear and it is a proud record of continuing increase in investment in these areas. And so if there are maintenance issues to be dealt with, they will be dealt with. If there are toilets that need to be upgraded, they will be upgraded. But why? Because we've always and consistently done that. And so my simple request to the RTBU is, don't bother doing councillor Cassidy's homework for him. If you've got legitimate concerns to raise, raise them through the appropriate channels and they'll be dealt with in an appropriate manner. And this is the case for this matter and any other issues relating to our bus operators.
Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
My question is to the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McGlocklin. Councillor McGlocklin, council has been advised by the Department of Transport and Main Roads that our left turn on red trial has to be discontinued. Can you outline for the chamber on what the trial entailed, council's position on this traffic treatment and the reason for TMR withdrawing its support?
Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you too councillor Atwood for the question. I want to start, Mr Chair, by saying at the outset that the Shrima Council and the state government's Department of Transport and Main Roads, TMR, share a common goal and that's to make our roads safer. Council and TMR share resources 365 days of the year through the jointly funded Brisbane Metropolitan Transport Management Centre, the BMTMC, managing traffic on our nearly 5,800 kilometres of roads and the connecting roads of the TMR network. That combined team certainly stepped up to the plate this time a week ago when half the signalised intersections in Brisbane went down with a power outage and which caused significant issues too for the TMR-managed roads. But I have to say, Mr Chair, that on the arbitrary decision by TMR to axe the left turn on red opportunity for Brisbane motorists at 17 signalised intersections in the city, I think they've made the wrong call. That's certainly what our residents are telling us too. For background, the left turn on red trial is a longstanding trial that has been running in Brisbane since 2013, initially at five locations in Brisbane and then expanded further across the city to 50 locations. The left turn on red trial has been extended several times with approval from the Department of Transport and Main Roads and modified on their requests. Councillors always work to ensure that the trial was conducted carefully and in line with the requests of the TMR and always considering the views of all road users as part of the process. It's a sensible measure, Mr Chair, well received by residents who use these intersections every day. Of course, our first and highest priority is always going to be about the safety of all road users, those in cars, in trucks, on bikes or walking. After the initial five sites were assessed, a further 45 locations were selected using the then mandatory conditions as per the Australian standards. In 2017, TMR told council to apply the left turn on red standards that are used in New South Wales instead of the Australian standards. Council complied, even though it significantly reduced the number of locations for the trial down to 17 sites through the city. The New South Wales guidelines used 12 mandatory tests for selecting a left turn on red site compared with the five tests under the Australian standards. The most recent TMR extension of the trial was granted in January 2020 with no indication then of dissatisfaction with its operation until last week. Despite eight years of cooperation, the department without notice revoked council's ability to continue this popular trial in a letter received last Tuesday. Get the left turn on red signs down by Monday. Yesterday, less than a week's notice, TMR has graciously allowed us another four weeks to undertake that directive. The only rationale cited for this decision was two traffic incidents, neither of which involved pedestrians or cyclists and occurred in 2017 and 2018. They were vehicle accidents, the details of which TMR hadn't previously provided to council. For context, since 2013, an estimated 15 million vehicles have turned left through the red at various left turn on red intersections, calculated by the independent Cars Q, the Centre for Accident Research and Road Safety Queensland. There is overwhelming community support for this sensible measure, which when reviewed by Cars Q in 2016, told council it had worked to reduce the delay of left-turning vehicles, which is certainly what residents have been telling us too. Mr Chair, the decision to abruptly stop council's left turn on red trial is an example of heavy-handed government overreach. The bureaucrats at TMR should review this decision and work with council rather than shooting from the hip. The left turn on red is a sensible measure which makes the best use of our road network as currently designed without needing to undertake expensive redesign of intersections. The whole trial, Mr Chair, from council's perspective, has always been collaborative and cautious and we've always acted in line with TMR's advice when asked while also taking on independent advice and that of council's own officers. However, I believe that some TMR engineers have not looked at the reality of the operation of left turn on red on their home patch and have instead swallowed and regurgitated North American research and opinions about the equivalent right turn on red operating in the northern hemisphere. I've read those papers and opinions too, Mr Chair. The operation of the right turn on red in the US is entirely different to what we have here. There have been incidents with pedestrians and cyclists in the US where right turn on red is a standard allowable movement unless otherwise signed and that shouldn't happen, didn't happen here, not permitted under our rules, the strict rules that we have adopted and should continue.
Councillor McGlocklin, your time has expired. Are there any further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Brisbane bus drivers are being forced to use dirty and unmaintained toilets. Pictures of these rotten amenities were recently published and I have some here if you'd like to see them, Lord Mayor. The disgusting condition of these facilities is unacceptable and it showcases the lack of care and consideration that the LMP has for Brisbane workers. So my question, Lord Mayor, would you be... Mayor, would you be happy to use these toilets on a daily basis?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well councillor Cassidy, I raise your pictures of a dirty toilet, and I show you pictures of the same toilet that's spotlessly clean, taken today. Look, it's easy to take a photo of a dirty toilet. And in fact, you would go anywhere and take a photo of a dirty toilet if you chose the right time of day. We maintain these toilets on a daily basis. We maintain these toilets-
Councillors, please, councillor Cassidy, please allow the answer to be heard. The Lord Mayor.
As I was saying, Mr Chair, we maintain and clean these toilets on a daily basis. They are cleaned daily, and that is appropriate.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Very simple question. Would the Lord Mayor be happy to use these toilets on a daily basis? Just say yes or no, just answer it.
The question's clear, the answer has been provided. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As I was saying, if there's maintenance that needs to be done, it will be done. If there's cleaning that needs to be done, it gets done on a daily basis. And as I said, it was very easy to take a photo at the right time of day of a dirty toilet. You know, that can happen anywhere at any time. I could go into the Hilton Hotel and take a photo of a dirty toilet. But the reality is, we, as I said very clearly before-
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
This is all nice for Lord Mayor to talk about Hilton toilets, but we're talking about toilets that he's providing for Brisbane bus drivers. And the question was, would he be happy to use them on a daily basis? He just needs to answer that.
The answer's been provided. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, councillor Cassidy, it's really quite sad what you're trying to do here. We treat our bus drivers with great respect, and we invest significantly in their safety and their facilities, and that will continue to be the case. And I'd be very careful about just believing hook, line and sinker what a couple of union officials feed you, because that is not necessarily the reality of the situation. What we know is that less than half of bus drivers are actually members of the union. And so not even the bus drivers themselves necessarily agree with what is being peddled by the union. And look, I have to admit, I understand that, because the union seems to want to create conflict everywhere. They just want to pick a fight on every single issue to make themselves relevant and justify their salaries and their positions. But the reality is, you will not find a bus company anywhere in Australia that invests more and treats their drivers with greater respect and invests more on an ongoing basis in facilities and fleet and depots and maintenance.
So the Lord Mayor, there's a point of order.
If we were able to ask the boss of other bus companies if they would use toilets, we would. But we've asked the Lord Mayor a very simple question. Would he be happy to use these toilets on a daily basis? Yes or no?
There was a lot more to the question than that. There was quite a lengthy preamble as well. So the Lord Mayor, do you have anything further to add?
Well, the only thing I know is this photo here, and yes, absolutely, this photo, which is taken today of the same toilet, I would be happy to use that toilet. I would be happy to use that toilet.
Councillor Cassidy, please cease interjecting. The Lord Mayor.
So to answer councillor Cassidy's question-
The Lord Mayor, please stop.
I'd be happy to use this toilet.
Councillor Cassidy, please, I'm directing you to cease interjecting. Please stop interjecting and allow the answer to be heard. To the question that you asked. No, councillor Cassidy, I've asked you to be quiet. Councillor Cassidy, I consider that you are- councillor Cassidy, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.5 of the meeting's local law. I hereby request that you cease interjecting and refrain from that behaviour. The Lord Mayor, please continue your answer. I will now call for further questions. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee councillor McLoughlin. Councillor McLoughlin, the award-winning Kingston Smith Drive upgrade has now been completed with just over six months. Can you outline how this project has eased congestion, delivered budget savings, and has provided a popular active travel pathway for Brisbane residents? Can you outline any alternatives?
Councillor McLoughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Hutton for this question. The Kingston Smith Drive upgrade was one of the biggest infrastructure projects that Brisbane City Council has ever delivered and is making a real difference to the efficiency of this vital city artery. This engineering and award-winning masterpiece, delivered by the Shruna Council, has also seen a revolutionary improvement for active transport options along one of the most scenic sections of the Brisbane River. It has, Mr Chair, set the standard for ensuring a roadway improvement that benefits vehicle movements, including public transport, also caters for active transport options, making this not only an improvement for the roadway infrastructure but reinventing the space for active travel too. The upgrade of Kingston Smith Drive has been up and running as a completed project for six months now, future-proofing it as an integral link to Brisbane's airport, the ports via the gateway, and the huge employment precinct of the Trade Coast. There have been notable feats of engineering that have taken place to facilitate the major aspect of this project. And as I've said previously, this has always been much more than increasing the number of lanes for vehicles. Very deep beneath the surface of KSD is a complex myriad of utility infrastructure, some of which dated back, had dated back to the 1800s. This upgrade involved replacing kilometres of water mains, gas, electricity, and stormwater infrastructure to allow for future growth. The increase in lanes provided for the future public transport growth needed to service the state government's priority development area of North Shore Hamilton with its predicted population of an additional 1,500 residents by 2030 was undertaken by our team. And it has allowed all those who use this arterial road to gain better access to other major roads in Brisbane, like the inner-city bypass and the Gateway Motorway. Importantly, the upgrade's increased capacity has allowed for reduced demand on the surrounding roads in the network. Kingston Smith Drive experiences a virtual 12-hour peak from 6am to 6pm without any significant reduction of demand during the day as the primary link to and from the city to support our city's industrial and commercial activity in Eagle Farm and the Trade Coast. A significant number of vehicles using KSD are heavy vehicles, at least 10% of the traffic every day. A huge proportion too are tradie vehicles, people going around their daily activity. In the six months since all works were completed, council has recorded an increased number of vehicles per day. In November 2020, when the road upgrades were first completed and Kingston Smith Drive resumed its regular 60 kilometre-an-hour operating speed, the daily average for the month sat at just over 58,000 vehicles per day. The most recent statistics that have been compiled have reported an average of 68,000 vehicles per day. This average increase of nearly 10,000 vehicles a day in just six months means that driver behaviour is changing and that KSD has resumed its role as one of Brisbane's most important arterial routes. In regard to the Loris Bonney Riverwalk constructed over the water itself, it provides a dedicated active transport hub with its two-metre-wide pedestrian path separated from a three-metre-wide cycle path. This separated access, Mr Chair, makes the Riverwalk an appealing and safer route for active travellers who are riding every day with their running shoes, their bike wheels, scooter wheels, rollerblades and wheels, all manner of active transport along there. As many as 2,300 active travellers are making use of this asset each day, and that number is set to rise with the increasing popularity of the North Shore precinct. A notable achievement, of course, Mr Chair, is that Kingston Smith Drive upgrade was completed and delivered under budget. Brake payers would have noticed in January that they received a $30 rebate in the last quarter. You asked councillor Hutton, though, about alternative proposals for this project that the Quirk Council announced and completed by the Shruna Council. We know that if the Labour Party had been as successful in the 2016 election, it would have not continued with the project. They would have ripped up the contract. The Labour Party wanted to scrap this project, take the easy path. "Oh, it's too hard", they said, "too disruptive". They said they wanted to condemn cyclists and walkers to continue using a dangerous and narrow path from Brettsworf to Cameron Rocks. If the Labour Party had had their way, they would have scrapped the infrastructure needed to transport the thousands of residents going to live in the PDA area of Hamilton North Shore. On their watch, motorists would have been forced to endure a road constructed for horse and car traffic in the 19th century and condemned cyclists and pedestrians to share a narrow path tacked onto the side of the road. Mr Chair, it is the Lord Mayor and the Shruna Council that's getting on with the job of delivering infrastructure for our city.
Councillor McLoughlin, your time has expired. Are there any further questions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor. Lord Mayor, in the LGIP, there's a new park identified for West End. I believe it's about half a hectare in size, and maybe around 10 million might have been allocated in the LGIP to acquire and create that park. The park's been listed in the LGIP for many years now and was supposed to be delivered by 2021. It hasn't been delivered by 2021, and it's now been pushed forward to 2026. The location of the park is identified as near Montague Road between Gray Road and Victoria Street. So it doesn't have a specific site address. And because it doesn't have a specific site address, that means that there's no trigger via development applications to actually deliver the park. So my concern is that if there's no trigger via development applications to actually buy land for the park, and there's no specific site identified for the park, then there's not going to be a park delivered. The council's just going to keep pushing that project forward again and again, year after year, and West End will never actually get that park it needs, even though there's clear demand. So my question to you is, what sites has the council been looking at as possibilities to deliver that LGIP park? And when will that park be delivered, given that it was supposed to be delivered by 2021 and you haven't met that deadline?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sri, for the question. Councillor Sri, this particular issue, as you have pointed out, is one that's been identified in the LGIP. And the LGIP identifies opportunities to expand parkland as an area grows. And the approximate location that councillor Sri referred to is not without its challenges. And so it's important that councillors are aware of a little bit of the history here. This is an area where there is, well, if I'm wrong in this assessment, I'd appreciate councillor Sri's advice to the contrary. But this is an area where there's no obvious site to create a park, because we're talking about an area that has existing homes on them, including most of them being character homes. So basically, what you would need to do here to create a new home, a new park, is to resume people's homes, kick them out and demolish character homes. That is effectively what would be required. Now, I'm aware that there was an opportunity nearby where there was a particular block of land which we approached the owner on and made an offer to buy a block of land which didn't have character homes on it, but that offer was not accepted. And so that opportunity wasn't able to come to fruition. But the reality here is that there is no obvious site. So I guess my challenge to councillor Sri is if he can identify which character home should go to make way for a park, we'll investigate that. But we're not in the business of coming in, knocking on people's doors and saying, by the way, you are out, because we're going to knock down your character house and put a park here. That's generally not the way that we operate. And I'm sure that the residents in that area would have a few things to say about that particular issue. And I know that the former councillor for the Gabbawood, does anyone remember Helen Abrahams? Yeah, so she was the former councillor for the Gabbawood. She actually ran a little scare campaign on this issue. Because we'd identified a future park, she went around scaring local residents that council was going to knock down character homes to build a park. So we're doing nothing of the kind. And so what she was doing was pushing back against this idea that character homes should be knocked down to build a park. And she wrote, excuse me, she wrote to the then Lord Mayor back in 2014 about this issue. And basically, we confirmed in response that we had no intention of knocking down character homes to build a park. So that's where the issue lies. If there are, sorry, I just grabbed a glass of water. If there are particular sites that councillor Sri would like to identify and submit for our consideration, that he thinks are suitable, we're happy to have a look at it and do this request justice. But, you know, it has been our intention to deliver a park there. But like many things in local government, sometimes these things are not easy, and there are no immediate solutions. But certainly it continues to be our aspiration to find a suitable site to deliver a park. By the same token, we respect people's private property rights, and we also respect the character of our city. And, you know, I do know that councillor Sri is very active in opposing virtually every single development application that's ever lodged. And he claims to not support removal of character houses yet. Oh, so yeah, he does support the removal of character houses. Okay, so that, well, that's interesting. That's a turn of events. Councillor Sri does support the removal of character houses.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Sri.
I think the mayor is deliberately misrepresenting what I've said in this chamber, what I've said to his administration in the past, and I would ask that he withdraw, or else give more detail and clarify the nature of my previous comments.
Thank you, councillor Sri. The Lord Mayor, I have a request. Did you withdraw some of the earlier comments? Could you please either withdraw or clarify as requested?
Certainly clarify what's been said. Apparently, there's some kind of email that's floating around. I'll have a look at that, and I'll be happy to put the email on the record. So by all means, we need to get to the bottom of this. But I guess my message is, yes, we would like to deliver a new park in this part of the city, as we do in many parts of the city. But we also respect the character of the city as well. And if there's no obvious site, then we do have to continue to look for an opportunity to arise.
Your time has expired. Councillor Timmy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Economic Development Committee councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, over the weekend, we saw reports of significant demand for home renovations within our city. Can you please outline to the chamber how initiatives of the Shruna Council have helped Brisbane's economy recover from COVID through the Economic Recovery Task Force?
The deputy mayor.
Thank you, councillor Timmy, and thank you for the question. Because if there is one good thing that came out of the turmoil of 2020, it was the ability for people to spend a little bit of time at home. And with the concept of working from home becoming the norm, or just the concept of spending way more time at home with your family, it allowed people to finally think about those renovations that they started or wanted to be doing for many, many years. So we knew when COVID hit the job losses front, that the one thing we're thinking about is how can we support those industries, some of our biggest industries, who are at risk of losing many of their employees. Sometimes the bigger they are, the harder they fall. And the highest among those employers was the building and construction industry, which caters for 15.8% of all jobs in the Brisbane local government area. That's over 117,000. So with the ability to hand down a budget within three months of the prospect of job losses, we had to make sure that we did absolutely everything possible to make sure that they did not occur. And that's exactly what Lord Mayor councillor Adrian Shruna did. And it's worked better than we could possibly have hoped for. Significant demand for home renovations is almost an understatement in our current environment. Through the Shruna Council's targeted fee waiving, we have seen a 37% increase in applications on the previous year. That has equated to the creation of over 1,000 new jobs, an injection of over $100 million into the local Brisbane economy. And this is a very encouraging figure, given we were anticipating the exact opposite to happen only weeks prior. Instead, with fee waivers to entice homeowners to spend money on their property, we had nearly 2,000 homes in Brisbane make use of our discounted fees, allowing them to invest in the greatest asset that they have. Team with our new initiatives aimed at delivering faster and more efficient assessments, including the House and Homes Assessment Team, this has helped boost the average yearly application number to over 4,500 applications each year, a clear indication that the Economic Recovery Plan is working. Now, a plan is not just a glossy document for press conferences, it is an outcome-driven policy paper designed to keep Brisbane locals spending and in their jobs, and it has achieved that for the building and construction industry. Working hand in hand, obviously, with the fee incentives that we saw from the Morrison government's Home Build-in Programme, where grants of up to 25,000 were provided for new bills, renovations, and off-the-plan purchases, we know this programme was extremely successful. The start date for construction was extended from six months to 18 months, given the massive- The start date for construction was extended from six months to 18 months, given the massive demand on the building and construction industry. It got to the point where locking in a builder was only achievable after a three to six month wait. Unfortunately, I am not surprised to see the leader of the opposition criticise our incentives on TV last week, saying, of course, the money could be spent better elsewhere. There are over 30 homes in the Deegan War which took up council's fee incentive, but his clear view is, obviously, there should have been none. As he is speaking on behalf of the team, three out of the top 10 suburbs were renovations, including Camp Hill, Belimba and Winham. And I'll let those respective councillors deliver the news that they didn't support the fee waivers to the residents that took up the opportunity. In addition to private homes, 57 non-for-profit organisations also took advantage of the scheme, totaling a savings of $350,000 for these groups. From a citywide perspective, more than half of Brisbane suburbs took advantage of the fee discounts. The top 10 suburbs were Paddington with 56, Barden with 50, Belimba and New Farm, Winham and Polara with 41, Ashgrove with 39 and Kedron and Hawthorn with 37. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Development Services staff, who have been putting in massive hours to make sure that Brisbane residents are getting their applications decided as soon as possible. All the applications that have come in, the new houses and renovations, are getting turned around in less than 30 days. A massive achievement for the high volume of applications coming in. Fee waivers, faster assessment, job creation, it's the outcome of our policy and it's exactly what we set out to do. I can assure you that Shrinna Council will continue to support the economic growth of this city and making sure through opportunities like this, and I'm sure the budget that comes up in the next couple of months, we will make sure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further questions councillor Strunk?
Thank you, thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, curbside collection has been cut for over a year now. Our committee, your committee chairperson has repeatedly said that residents can go into their local ward offices and get more dump vouchers if they need them. That is not true, Lord Mayor. You have not relaxed the policy guidelines for handing out additional vouchers. Council policy clearly states that ward offices cannot give vouchers to residents who claim that they have used all their entitlement for that particular financial year. You told residents that they could go in and get extra vouchers when they couldn't because you failed to change the policy. Lord Mayor, why do you allow your committee chairperson to deliberately mislead residents?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, first of all, there's some significant inaccuracies in that question. First one is that we didn't cut curbside collection. We paused it. We paused it for a period of two years. And we reinvested the savings from that into the community. And it's interesting, because Labour's DNA is to spend, spend, spend without any, I guess, option of looking for opportunities to offset that spending. And we can see up at the state level, this, this principle is in play, where they identified $3 billion, well, they were supposed to identify $3 billion of savings in the budget. And what was the latest tally they got to? I think they got to $3 million or something, out of $3 billion. This is the kind of financial ineptitude that we see at play here. So as a basic principle, if you, if you just keep spending and you keep spending more than is coming in the door, you go into deficit. And if you keep doing that again and again, then you lose your ability to deliver for the people of Brisbane, you lose your ability to deliver the long-term projects and infrastructure that are required. And so as a responsible administration and using the principles of responsible financial management, we found, identified a saving that could be made through the pausing of curbside collection for two years, and we immediately reinvested that money saved back into the community. Into supporting more than 350 community and charity groups with grants of up to $10,000 through the COVID Assistance Programme. And that, that was money that helped them stay afloat in a time when they risked going under, when their ability to raise money, as they would normally do, was cut off because they couldn't operate, yet the bills kept coming in. We helped them. Why? Because we paused curbside collection. Wouldn't have been possible if we didn't pause curbside collection. There's also a further 4.5 million that went into waiving rents and fees for community groups and sporting organisations in council lease facilities. So once again, that money went back to the community, supporting the community in its time of need. All we've done is asked people to hang on to their large items for a bit longer. It's not a big ask. It's not a big ask, yet all Labour has done has, has been to criticise this responsible move, take the cheap political option, do some cheap political point scoring, run cheap political rallies with a bunch, yeah, with, which is basically a Labour branch meeting.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
A point of order to you councillor Strunk.
The substantive part of my question is, it was in regards to the dump vouchers and the residents being able to access them.
Thank you, thank you councillor Strunk. The Lord Mayor, can I draw your attention to that element of the question?
Thank you. It's important background, because curbside collection is something that they continue to raise again and again and again, and they're missing some important facts when they raise this issue. So first of all, we didn't cut curbside collection, it was always coming back. And as I've always said, it will come back as soon as we can afford to bring it back. Secondly, I'm not aware that the claim that councillor Strunk made is accurate. And councillor Marks has provided information in this place before, but what I was aware was inaccurate was councillor Strunk advertising to residents that he had no more tip vouchers to hand out. That was inaccurate, when he could easily have gotten a resupply. That was inaccurate. So if there's mistruths being peddled, then I'm aware of one from councillor Strunk, where he was trying to make people believe that the big bad council had cut off the supply of tip vouchers, when nothing of the kind had happened. So yes, there have been some mistruths, but they have been coming from councillor Strunk and his Labour colleagues when it comes to tip vouchers. And I support the work that councillor Marks has been doing in making sure ward officers are resupplied with these tip vouchers, so that they can continue to be provided to the community as we have done in the past.
Point of order to you councillor Strunk.
It's about the conditions that you can attract additional vouchers, is the substantive part of my question that the Lord Mayor has not dealt with.
If you recall, I did draw the Lord Mayor back to the substantive parts of the question in his answer, but I think the Lord Mayor has concluded. And that concludes question time.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order, point of order councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thank you Chair. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. The Lord Mayor commits to reinstating curbside collection in the upcoming council budget, which is being handed down on 16th of June 2021.
Second. An urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk. I trust it's been distributed momentarily.
I've just sent that through, yeah, thanks.
Thank you councillor Cassidy, you have three minutes. Wait one moment while we reset your clock. Three minutes to urgency, please.
Thanks very much Chair. This is urgent for, for many reasons, but one of those has to be what the Lord Mayor just said, in that he thinks people should just hold on to their rubbish for three years, for three years, while he cuts curbside collection. He cut it in April last year, and he's intending to cut it again in this, this budget as well, Chair, because he said it's going to be, it's going to be offline. So Chair, this is urgent to deal with this today, because the council budget will be handed down in two weeks' time. We have an opportunity here as a council to make sure that the Lord Mayor does the right thing. Now, over the weekend Chair, councillors on this side attended a community rally and we got a real sense, Chair, a real sense of the community's frustration.
Councillors, councillors, allow, thank you, please allow councillor Cassidy to proceed.
Thank you Chair. We got a sense of the community's frustration with this LNP administration and clearly, clearly they were there spying from a distance, Chair. The Lord Mayor knows all about what went on. If the Lord Mayor knows all what went on. I'm sure councillor Allen was sitting up in his office hiding in the dark, looking out through, looking out through the windows, Chair, at what we were doing there. But this Lord Mayor needs to admit, he needs to admit that he got it wrong, Chair. This Lord Mayor needs to admit that he got it wrong. This is urgent, Chair, because people in the community are sick and tired of their streets being dumping grounds, being littered with unwanted items. Items that would normally be taken away through curbside collection, items that this Lord Mayor said today that those people should just hang on to for three years. Well, those people paid their rates, Chair, and they expect services out in the suburbs and they're simply not getting it from this Lord Mayor, because he is more interested in feathering his own nest, he's more interested in advancing his own political career by spending $6.5 million.
Just to urgency, please.
Spending $6.5 million on advertising himself, Chair. This is urgent, Chair, because people are paying rates and they expect services and they're not getting services from this Lord Mayor. What they're seeing month in, month out, is those living in Brisbane newsletters that are costing rate payers $5.2 million. They're seeing their rates go up, they've seen their rates go up twice this calendar year, first on January 1 and again on July 1 this year. And they're not seeing value for money, Chair. So today, what we can do as a chamber is say unequivocally to the Lord Mayor, you got it wrong when you cut curbside collection. People pay their rates and they expect services and they expect you, as the leader of this city, to do the right thing.
Councillors, on the matter of urgency, all those who believe this to be urgent, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The noes have it.
A division?
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand. Thank you, and those against, please say no and raise your hand. Was it, I believe there may have been an abstention. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour, 16 against and one abstention.
Thank you, the noes have it. We'll now proceed to the Establishment Coordination Committee, please. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 24th of May be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 24th of May 2021, be adopted, is there any debate? The Lord Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. This mark, this week marks Reconciliation Week, and it's a time for all Australians to learn about the shared histories, cultures and achievements of Aboriginal people and Torres Strait Islander people, and explore how we can each join in the National Reconciliation effort. In support of National Reconciliation Week, Radcliffe Place sculptures, Tropical Dome, the Story Bridge will be lit up black, yellow and red, and also blue, white and green for the Torres Strait Islander flag and the Aboriginal flags this evening. Tomorrow marks Italian National Day, and each year on the 2nd of June, Italy celebrates its national day. It's a day that's celebrated with ceremony, colour, events and festivities. For Brisbane's Italian community, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges and Radcliffe Place sculptures will be lit green, white and red on Wednesday. Thursday, 3rd of June is Marbo Day. Eddie Marbo, as we all know, one of the most famous names in Australian history, was an Australian Torres Strait Islander who campaigned for indigenous land rights, leading to the landmark decision of the High Court of Australia in 1992. The decision overturned the legal narrative of terra nullius and recognised that some indigenous Australians have proprietary rights or native title. Victoria Bridge and Story Bridges, Radcliffe Place sculptures and Tropical Dome will be lit in blue, sorry, white, blue and green on Thursday in recognition of Marbo Day. On Friday, we're lighting our assets for Let's Get Awesome for Autism Day. This is an initiative of the AEIOU Foundation for Children with Autism, and they have a simple yet sincere goal, to provide early intervention that enables children with autism to live their best lives. This annual campaign raises awareness of autism with activities and fundraising through gold coins. Victoria and Story Bridges and Radcliffe Place sculptures will be lit in blue and pink on Friday for the campaign. Now, I promised councillor Shree, because he took umbrage to my comments before, that I would clarify, and I have found, thanks to councillor Adams, the email that was referred to. So I've got that email, and it was relating to the provision of public, public parkland and in particular, this particular West End park near Montague Road. And let me quote from this. "I just want to place on the record that I am in principle supportive of removing character homes to create parkland, where there's strong public interest in doing so, and in brackets, subject to adequate consultation and notification, et cetera. And I believe the majority of local residents would support such an approach." So that's what he said. Now, that's the exact words, I'm not taking anything out of context here. So he does support the removal of character homes if the community supports it, subject to adequate consultation. Well, I wonder if that's the same type of consultation that a dog-off-leash area would generate, because we've seen how councillor Shree conducts public consultation. He's quite happy to ride roughshod over people if it suits his own political agenda.
Point of order to you councillor Shree.
I'm concerned that the mayor is defaming me now, and he knows very well that we conducted a lot of consultation regarding that dog-off-leash area. And I would ask that he consider withdrawing.
I, I, I understand the point of what you're making, thank you. Always, I will, Lord Mayor, there's been a request that you withdraw, will you withdraw?
Well, look, if he thinks I'm defaming him, I will withdraw. But I would simply point out that we had a public speaker in here just last week who was highlighting her view on what she believed was the inadequacy of the consultation that had been conducted, and that heavy reliance was put on an online poll. And she felt very strongly, and she claimed to be speaking on behalf of many residents, that the local councillor hadn't conducted adequate consultation. So, look, it's easy to throw around these claims, but in the end, it would be councillor Shree, a very cold day, or a very rare day in Brisbane, if you would get the community agreeing that it was in the public interest to knock down a whole stack of character houses to build a park. I just don't see that happening.
Point of order councillor Shree.
Claimed to be misrepresented?
Noted. I'll call you later in the meeting.
Okay. Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Shree.
Just concerned that the mayor's misleading the chamber, given that his administration did relocate other character homes in Wool and Gabba for another park project.
Well, point of orders will not be used as, as for advancing arguments. The Lord Mayor, please continue.
So councillor Shree is getting quite worked up over this issue. I would simply restate my previous commitment to him and request of him, which is, please identify suitable sites and we will investigate whether they are feasible or not. So I again make that statement.
No, 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 no more dejecting, the Lord Mayor.
And so councillor Shree's confirmed that we have been assessing sites.
And so councillor Sri has confirmed that we have been assessing sites for suitability, which sort of undermines the whole point of his initial question, which is, he's suggesting that we're not taking it seriously. We absolutely are taking it seriously, but this is not an easy challenge to fix. This is not an easy situation to deal with, and it is the case that...
No, councillor Sri, please cease and dejecting.
I think the people of Brisbane would be grateful that you're not doing my job, councillor Sri, because it is easy, when there's no chance of you ever being the leader of a city or being in government, to demand all types of things. It is easy to demand other people pay for all types of things as well. It's easy to think that every problem will be solved by taxing developers more or taxing the wealthy more, which is basically just standard green socialist policy. But as the leader of this city, I understand that, yes, we want to provide more parkland, but we don't necessarily want to kick people out of character homes to do so. And so I think that's a reasonable position to hold, and that is a position that we have consistently held. Now, ultimately, on this particular issue, I again restate to councillor Sri, if he wants to identify specific homes that we should buy, then he is more than welcome to do so, and we'll have a look at those homes. But I would also say that for someone that is getting a bit precious about defamation, didn't think twice about calling the police racist and violent, which I would consider quite defamatory. So let's move on to the items in front of us. Item A is the amendment to the City Plan Package N. Package N proposes changes to the infrastructure design planning scheme policy in City Plan to reflect the most up-to-date information and best practice design. The proposed changes will adopt the latest Australian standards for public lighting, local parks, roads, bikeways and public spaces. Strengthen, so the changes will also strengthen certification requirements for stormwater treatment devices in line with council policy and industry standards, and also update all other reference specifications and Brisbane standard drawings to maintain the currency and usability of the City Plan. The proposed amendments will be released for consultation in July and August, and if adopted, will go into the planning scheme later this year. Item B is a major amendment to Brisbane City Plan relating to the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Council commenced the neighbourhood planning process for Bridgeman Downs in September 2019 to help guide future growth, protect environmental values and coordinate the delivery of supporting infrastructure. The suburb naturally divides into two distinct halves, either side of Bridgeman and Albany Creek roads, rural zoning to the west and residential estates to the east. While we can expect to see more housing supply over the next 10 to 20 years, the suburb is not expected to be a high-growth area, and not all land is needed for development. The draft neighbourhood plan, excuse me, I can assure everyone, it's not COVID. I've had my second jab. The draft neighbourhood plan outlines which parts of Bridgeman Downs are planned to accommodate housing, and importantly, how the environmental values will be protected as the suburb continues to grow. It's made clear through community consultation that townhouses and apartments are not consistent with the green and leafy nature of the area, and they will not be included in the plan going forward. And that includes in the emerging community zoned areas. The community can expect to see continued residential growth in areas across the eastern side of Bridgeman Downs, with larger suburban lot sizes commensurate with existing estates. The north-western large lot precinct contains significant environmental values, and all those single homes can be accommodated.
Your time has expired.
May for extension, second.
An extension has been proposed by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, further 10 minutes.
Thank you, I'll promise to be brief. The north-west large lot precinct contains significant environmental values, and all those single homes can be accommodated, larger acreage-style lots will be required to ensure that these environmental values are protected. Rural areas to the west will stay largely as they are, and significant waterway and bushland corridors around the Beckett Road precinct will be further protected with the introduction of the Environmental Management Zone that restricts further subdivision and out-of-step development from occurring. The draft neighbourhood plan will now proceed to the state interest review prior to its release for public consultation later this year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, I'll speak on both of these items. Clause A seems to be on what has been provided to us, a number of technical document references and some administrative changes in that package there to City Plan. Clause B is the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan amendment. I've been speaking over the last year or more with a lot of residents in the Bridgeman Downs area, and they tell me repeatedly that they are often ignored by this LMP administration. We've seen a spike in development across McDowell and the McDowell Ward since the 2020 council election. The number of previously rejected development approvals in this area have now very conveniently been given the green light, and we certainly hope that that won't be the case, Chair, with the Koala Habitat at 415 to 427 Beckett Road. And we know this Lord Mayor refused to buy this bushland, using the bushland preservation levy. We believe there needs to be a very strong emphasis on protecting and enhancing the ecological features of this area, particularly this very critical block of land. Bridgeman Downs is home to a critical link in the mountains to Mangrove's Wildlife Corridor, and that needs protecting. So already the horse has bolted on a large number of DAs in this area, Chair, before the amendment is able to pull the reins on any of that, of course, but we certainly hope that the community, once it comes back from its state interest check, is actually listened to when the neighbourhood plan goes out for public consultation, and we will reserve further comments on details of that until that package comes back to council after consultation.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to speak to item B, the major amendment to Brisbane City Plan 2014, and that is the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Mr. Chair, Bridgeman Downs is a great suburb and a wonderful place to live, and the suburb has all the benefits of a peaceful semi-rural locality where locals can get out and about and enjoy our outdoor Brisbane lifestyle. Developing a new neighbourhood plan for Bridgeman Downs has been one of my key priorities since becoming a councillor for McDowell Ward, and I very much appreciate the support from Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner in progressing this neighbourhood plan for the residents of Bridgeman Downs. Working with the local community to develop a future blueprint which protects the character of Bridgeman Downs and where residents can coexist with a diverse range of native wildlife has led to the draft plan before us today. In September 2019, we commenced the neighbourhood planning process, and residents of Bridgeman Downs were invited to complete a survey to help inform the development of the draft strategy. A community planning team, which included representatives from the local area, also met three times between October 2019 and February 2020. A draft strategy was then released for community consideration and input, and local residents were given the opportunity to provide feedback, and, Mr. Chair, this community feedback was an important piece in the development of the draft plan. The draft plan proposes future developments are restricted to low-density housing, where minimum block sizes range from 400 to 700 square metres, to help preserve the look and feel of this wonderful suburb. We will also continue to prioritise the protection of our native flora and fauna. To this end, the draft plan supports the retention of areas with identified biodiversity and waterway values associated with Albany Creek and Cabbage Tree Creek catchments, and will ensure that future developments avoid waterway fragmentation. The next stage of this process will be for this amendment package to proceed to a state interest review. Following this, the draft plan will be released for further public consultation, and I would highly recommend and encourage local residents to participate in that public consultation. I do look forward to the finalisation of this next stage in the neighbourhood plan development process, and I do know that the people of Bridgeman Downs will be eager to have their say later this year when the draft plan is presented for community consultation.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just briefly on both these items before us today. Firstly, on the Package N, the City Plan changes to the standard documents and planning policy support documents. Again, I think this administration has gone about this in the wrong way. Whenever we undertake these major citywide changes to City Plan, there should be briefings for councillors. Now, I didn't bother writing this week because last week's was rejected, and since that time, the officers have been out to see me, but they haven't been able to answer all my questions either, so I'm still waiting for a lot of information about the LGIP. Again, today, we're seeing citywide changes that have enormous impact for how everyday things, lighting, footpaths, roads, will be delivered across the city, and I think it is incumbent upon this administration to consult with councillors, to make sure we're properly briefed and that we are able to actively participate in the discussion in an informed way. There is a huge amount of technical documentation before us today, and again, it is extremely disappointing that councillor Adams couldn't be bothered to organise, I mean, we usually only get a 30-minute talk and she cuts questions off, so it's not like the briefings are that great anyway, but she's not even agreeing to do that. There are some issues here, I think. The public lighting standards are a little bit problematic, and I've written to the Lord Mayor about this. It's disappointing that he's ignored my feedback, I'll make it again as part of this review, but we need to engage in meaningful consultation with residents when we undertake street lighting upgrades. It's come to my attention that neither council nor enerjex notify residents in advance of street lighting being upgraded. So I simply suggested that council undertakes a consultation process like it does with Street Trees, so you get a flyer in your letterbox saying, "Streetlights are being upgraded on your street between here and here." And it was a pretty practical suggestion, it just means a flyer gets dropped in the street, guess what, they wrote back and said no. It is really problematic when this administration refuses to engage in a meaningful way with our local communities. It's not like we, as local councillors, are notified before the works happen. The way we find out about them is afterwards, when residents say that there's no glare shield or the light shining into my house and so on. So there's a real problem, I think, with the way in which this administration is going about delivering on these processes, and if we're going to make changes to the standards, which are going to increase illumination across the city, then we should have consultation and notification prior to that happening. I am very concerned about the independent verification of proprietary stormwater treatment devices, so I'll certainly be following up on that offline. This administration currently fails in any meaningful way to review and ensure that stormwater drainage, historical stormwater drainage in this city is properly capped, and any new development that happens now creates enormous impact in older suburbs when these old grey water lines start running off into people's properties because they've not been properly capped. This administration has refused repeatedly to support amendments, sorry, motions that are brought in here, previous Lord Mayors have refused to look at this. It is critically important that council make sure that we have proper standards and guidelines in place where new development intersects with historical grey water lines, and it's happening everywhere in older suburbs, and it is enormously problematic. And council refuses to do anything, refuses to do anything. That is not good enough. So I do think that there should have been a briefing, I do think there are some issues in terms of the technical nature of what's proposed here. There are certainly ways in which this administration can improve what it is doing. Just with respect to the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan, I'm so pleased for councillor Davis that there's not going to be any townhouses and units in her suburb. Yeah, I'm very pleased for you about that. Meanwhile, you know, heritage-listed sport and rec land in my ward's being converted into commercial buildings, because this administration won't even protect the buildings in the current plan that it says are there for protection. We see parkland having units being built on it, we see industrial areas having units built on them.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate that you're developing an argument, could, can I please ask you to concentrate your remarks on Bridgeman Downs, please?
And again, I'm just complimenting councillor Davis on how wonderful it is for her residents that she doesn't have to have any townhouses or units out there in Bridgeman Downs. Well, the Lord Mayor basically stood up and said there were no townhouses and units, so I'm sure she's not correcting the Lord Mayor. I just, I'm sorry, I just don't have it, I thought there might be a few other speakers. And I just noted there are a few infrastructure upgrades included in this plan, which I thought this council was not putting infrastructure upgrades into neighbourhood plans any longer, so I did note that with interest. So when it comes to future neighbourhood plans in my area, I'll certainly bringing this one out for a reminder to council, given it refused, I think, in the Dutton Park-Fairfield neighbourhood plan to include any infrastructure upgrades. Yeah, no, we wouldn't want to see a double standard happening at all, we wouldn't want something different in Bridgeman Downs to say in Yorongar or somewhere like that.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I rise to speak on item A and item B. As has been mentioned by the Lord Mayor with the amendment to Brisbane City Plan Package N, this is about updating our infrastructure design scheme policies, it's not about the processes, it's not about how enerjex goes around it, but it is about making sure that we have consistency with the new Australian standards for public lighting, and that includes the latest technologies for LED lighting. Remote management controls is a great opportunity for this one, for our expansive network across parks, roads, bikeways and other pedestrian areas. In addition to that, there is the stormwater and some of the minor changes that we've seen there, in particular around the proprietary solutions. So when it comes to generic solutions for council, we are very, very clear, they are included in our standard drawings that reflect best practice, they're based on our concept designs, Guidelines for Water Sensitive Urban Design 2009, and anyone who's been in this place since then is very familiar with those. We have an industry-accepted design parameters for use in modelling and calculations, and that includes connecting it in to heritage stormwater areas, and also the Model for Urban Stormwater Improvement conceptualisation, which actually, the anagram is music, ironically. The proprietary solutions is the things that we're seeing the difference of, and this is the things that is taking a lot of time for councillors to actually review when it's not our specialty. That's when they come up with ideas that are developed through private industry, there's no current industry standard at the moment, so we are putting the pressure back on them to show to us why to rationalise and verify the performance metrics of these proprietary solutions, and we will be making sure that we keep a close eye on what they bring in through those technical reports as well. With the Administrative and Planning Scheme Policy Amendment, this is a package that is required to go to public notification, as the Lord Mayor set out, will be out around July, August, and then it will be back to the chamber for adoption with any changes that need to be made. With amendment B, Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan, councillor Davis is very passionate about her community and the future of this growing suburb, but this is an exemplary neighbourhood planning exercise where the local community has really engaged from the get-go and committed to developing a shared vision for Bridgeman Downs. It began in 2019, when we realised that we did need to do those planning provisions to safeguard the area's futures, and they told us very clearly what they wanted to see, and that was to make sure we saw the opportunities to better the suburb, they valued the natural environment, waterways, bushland, native habitats and expansive parklands, but they also wanted to combine this with the city convenience as well from where they are. So there was a very clear and important theme that emerged here, and that was that they felt the recent housing developments, townhouses and apartments, of which there are plenty in the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan area, were not consistent in what they wanted to see in the future. So they will not be included in the plan going forward, and they will be not included and permitted in the emerging community zones within this area as well. A big win for the local community. So only freestanding single homes on large suburban lots to maintain the look and feel of the suburb, this is not an inner-city, not even a middle-ring suburb city, this is much further out, but we are working on providing additional housing, we've had it clear from the state government, we do need to look at housing options, but we made sure that we listened to the residents around their unique landscape, residential neighbour, and delineated four clear precincts to manage the future. neighbour, and delineated four clear precincts to manage the future growth. So east of Bridgeman Downs, we can expect to see similar residential housing estates to what's currently there. There will be subdivisions accompanying each proposal, which will need to be seen detailed site-based planning and environmental assessments. To the west, there's established acreage areas. We don't expect to see much change any time soon around there, and there'll be additional planning controls to ensure the bushland and waterway corridors are protected and enhanced. The north-west Rogan Road South precincts clear, sets clear parameters around the extent of change and growth, but having significant environmental values across this precinct. Single homes can be accommodated where they are not within waterway or habitat corridors. Large lot sizes averaging 1,000 square metres are required. And to the south-east, we have the Beckett Road precinct, designed to strengthen the protections around significant ecological corridors while carefully facilitating the right kind of housing in the right locations. The community can be very confident that the Shrinna Council has done absolutely everything we could possibly do to protect the important and valued environmental corridors through here. This draft plan has put forward a proposal to rezone the connection that was emerging community to environmental management zoning as well, limiting any attempt to subdivide properties and putting a stop to more housing in that area as well. So it is a delicate balance in these further-out suburbs facilitating housing supply for the needs of our growing city, while ensuring our valued bushland, native habitats and character of suburbs is preserved for generations to come. As the Lord Mayor said, through the state government interest check next, I'm sure they'll be pleased to see the work that the Shrinna Council has done here to satisfy their dwelling targets under the South State Environment Significance Areas being protected as well. And then it will go out to community consultation later in the year.
Further speakers? Any further speakers to the Lord Mayor? I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee held on Tuesday, 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. First of all, to the Brisbane Business Hub Workshops and Mentoring Programme. Last week, we saw record numbers for people on the couch sessions that we had, in particular with Glenn Richardson, over 200 people with a waitlist for that one. This week, we don't have any on-the-couch events, but we have organisational and change communication around internal communication strategies and priorities for businesses post-COVID. That is on the 3rd of June, 3 till 5, being run by Rollins. And then understanding intellectual property, which I think is probably very important for any of those startups and entrepreneurs, how to protect and gain value from their IP and useful strategies for avoiding IP issues on next Tuesday, 9 till 11, with King's Paint and Trademarks Attorney. And we thank both of those business partners for their support of the Business Hub. And last week's presentation, a bit of an extension from the question that I had on today, was about the House and Homes team. It was set up as part of the Shrinna Council's Economic Recovery Task Force, and it's done a fantastic job in delivering on the objectives of their role. It's a dedicated express service that prioritises small-scale domestic applications, the majority of which include the new houses, extensions, demolitions, subdivisions, as well as any change applications relating to any of those applications as well. We looked at some very quick and lightning approvals right across the city, which helped people get into their extensions or their new homes faster, and a $944 saving delivered to a new home that will be built in a Botanical Circuit in Polara, which took a mere 16 days to approve. So it's great to see the type of opportunities we see. At Wynnham Road in Tegelpa, there was a 50% reduction for a double carport, again turned around in 16 days. An extension to a pre-1947 in Baden, which catered for a new home office and a reading room, maybe just to give them that little bit of space from their family on the weekend as well. We also had some around local heritage-listed places, such as Aston Street to Wong, for double garage, minor reconfigurations, 50% fee reduction, made a $944 saving, but easier to get the car off the street and look after their property as well. As I mentioned earlier today, nearly 2,000 households took advantage of these fee waivers, and we are very happy with the way that the council officers have worked so hard with the workload, and House and Homes team is here to stay. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Adams, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Committee, please. Is councillor Murphy around? Is his deputy here?
Oh my God. Newsless.
Can I please have... Thank you. The Public and Active Transport Committee, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. Can I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted?
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Murphy.
Firstly, Chair, I want to acknowledge the big news announced earlier today. This morning, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and I announced the two companies that have won Brisbane's first e-bike operating agreements, and they will roll out e-bikes and even more e-scooters next month. We're beyond excited to continue our partnership with Neuron Mobility, and we also welcome on board Beam Mobility. So from the 22nd of July, the town will be painted purple and orange, with even Neuron devices being rolled out across the city, as well as Beam's brightly-coloured e-scooters and e-bikes. And Beam are the purple ones, for those who don't know. We are well and truly in the era of e-mobility, and like many people in Brisbane, the Shrinna Council is fully embracing the shift to electric technology. Now, since late 2018, over 4.25 million trips have been taken on our shared e-scooters, and we know that demand is only continuing to grow, with e-scooters being the only mode of transport to now return to pre-pandemic levels. Under the new agreements, Neuron and Beam will operate a cap of 2,000 e-scooters and 800 e-bikes, split 50/50 between them. This means another 500 scooters will be hitting the streets next month, and of course, the rollout of our first-ever shared e-bikes. We've established a positive working relationship with Neuron since mid-2019, and beyond their fantastic e-mobility products, we've been really impressed with their customer service and their communication with council. Neuron is operating in 12 locations across Australia and New Zealand, including Darwin, Adelaide, Canberra, Townsville, Bundaberg, Auckland and Dunedin. Over the last year, Neuron has started to make a name for themselves internationally, launching in the UK and Korea, and just this month, they won a licence chair to operate in Ottawa. So Beam is also a well and truly established company across the nation, operating their devices in Adelaide, in Canberra, Townsville, Bunbury, the bustling hub of Bunbury, and as well as Sydney, Auckland, Wellington, Malaysia, South Korea and Taiwan overseas. So we're very glad to be welcoming Beam to Brisbane, who are extremely well-regarded in the industry, they've earned a very good reputation for delivering high-quality devices. I'd also like to acknowledge that while we won't be moving forward with Lime as part of the new operating agreements, we certainly thank them for the great partnership that we've had over the last two and a half years and for the role that they played in Brisbane's e-mobility evolution. Of course, Lime being the first operators to set up here in Brisbane in 2018 when they were granted a temporary licence to do so. So we say goodbye to Lime.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Sri.
Well, councillor Murphy, take a question?
Councillor Murphy, will you take a question?
Sure.
Please proceed.
I know you can't give away private confidential tendering stuff, but can you give us any indication of why Lime wasn't quite as strong as some of the other tenders and why they didn't get accepted for the ongoing contract?
Councillor Murphy.
Look, absolutely not. The council has a very strong and robust tendering process, councillor Sri, but I'm not going to go into the individual machinations behind why different tenders were selected. Suffice to say that council set up a very strong framework, not around price solely, but around non-price factors, of which safety and the organisation's approach to safety was the number-one factor, and Beam and Neuron won out in that tender process. But look, there's even more, Chair, because this morning we released the final version of the e-mobility strategy for Brisbane. This document is the first of its kind in the world. Other strategic e-mobility documents in the past have assessed the current performance of e-mobility, but the Shrinna Council's e-mobility strategy is the first publication to actually map a way forward for e-mobility. We're really proud that Brisbane is not only breaking ground at a national level, but also an international level in this regard. The strategy includes five broader outcomes that will allow e-mobility to become an integral and seamless part of the city's transport network. Related to each outcome, specific actions are included that set out a clear pathway for integrating e-mobility here in Brisbane. We went out to consultation on the draft strategy document between late September and late February and received over 900 pieces of feedback from people and stakeholder groups. The key themes that emerged from consultation related to greater focus on safety and providing infrastructure to improve amenity in the city, and we took this on board in formulation of the final strategy. It includes actions such as working to limit speed limits in high-traffic pedestrian areas, statewide safety programmes, and working with the state government, exploring opportunities for extending shared e-mobility into new parts of the city, and developing a plan for designated e-mobility parking areas and better consideration of charging facilities. The strategy is an action plan and will be seeking cooperation from other levels of government to help manage and plan for e-mobility here in Brisbane. Council is leading the charge, but the state government need to play their part to ensure that there are appropriate levels of enforcement and regulations for e-mobility devices. We need to take a holistic approach to managing e-mobility, and Chair, this is what the strategy will help to realise. As the title of the strategy indicates, this document is intended to guide e-mobility between now and 2023, recognising the rapidly changing nature of the e-mobility industry and technology. Over the last two years, the e-mobility industry's grown so much, and in another two years, the industry will have evolved even further, so the strategy will be reevaluated at that point before the end of this council term. I encourage all councillors in this place and those listening from home to go to council's website and read Brisbane's E-Mobility Strategy 2021 to 2023. It's now available online. Mr Chair, moving to the report before us now, which contains just one item this week. I'm pleased that last week, the Public and Active Transport Committee was able to learn a little bit more about Malthana Property Services and the many mutual benefits that this partnership is delivering to councils. We've heard very recently, Malthana is doing that great work to sanitise our bus fleet and to protect our community, and importantly, our bus drivers during the pandemic. Mr Chair, Malthana employees are fogging and cleaning every night of the week at all seven depots, which is truly an essential service for the city in our current climate. We were very lucky to have Joey from Malthana to come in on a fortnight to go to address council. So, Chair, I'll keep my comments brief, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy? I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor McGlocklin, seconded by councillor Landers, that the Infrastructure Committee report on the meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. To the items before us, a presentation on the Newman and Wecker Road intersection upgrade in Mount Gravat East, upgrade being delivered by the Shrinna Council with funding support from the federal government under its Urban Congestion Fund. Some of the benefits discussed in the presentation were the significant changes proposed to promote both pedestrian and driver safety, as well as better traffic flow.
But councillors, there's just a lot of secondary conversations. Could we just allow the speaker to be heard in silence? And if you do have a conversation, please take him in the corridor. Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mr Chair. This upgrade has been largely facilitated by a road widening, which was necessary to create additional turning lanes. These dedicated turning lanes are needed at the intersection, as the intersection is at capacity during peak hours, morning and afternoon, causing congestion and increased risk to the 35,000 vehicles that use this intersection every day. There have been a significant number of crashes here. Thirteen of the 18 crashes that were recorded between 2014 and 2019 were attributed to the right turn from Newman to Wecker Road. The objective of the project was to see a fully controlled right turn from Newman into Wecker Road, which is a targeted safety improvement. The upgrade, though, caters for all road users, whether they be motorists or active transport users, because it improves the intersection reliability and increases connectivity for pedestrians. The significant aspects to this project are the widening of Newman Road to provide a new dedicated right-turn lane into Wecker Road, adding an additional right-turn lane from Wecker Road into Newman Road, enhancing pedestrian connectivity by installing a signalised crossing at the slip lane of Newman Road, and promoting active transport options by upgrading footpaths and installing a shared pedestrian and cyclist path on Newman Road. The project will be a major congestion busting project for the area as an intersection that incorporates a major arterial road, which in turn feeds into the major intersection of the Newman and Creek arterial roads. It's vitally important that council keeps up with increasing traffic demand in our suburbs. Mr Chair, land acquisitions commenced in July last year. Tenders were released in April, with construction set to begin once land acquisitions are complete, and project is anticipated to be finished in mid-2022. Last week, in our committee, there were petitions that were considered, a petition requesting council install traffic calming devices on Corinth Road and Bathania Street, Lotha, and to install traffic signals at Avon Adney Road, Lotha, and a petition requesting council investigate traffic calming measures on Green Camp Road between Manly and Molly Road, Wakely. I'll leave any debate on these items to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, just in relation to items B and C, in relation to item B, this part of Lotha has three busy streets, got White's Road, Andrews Street and Hine Street. Apart from that, it's some very quiet streets. In fact, it's a lovely sleepy hollow. But any speeding or hoon activity, I believe, should stand out, and I'd love to see the police in using, stamping it out using their anti-hooning legislation. I noticed recently, former officer-in-charge of Wynnham Police Station now is inspected down the Gold Coast, they confiscated 17 vehicles in one raid over a... to crack down on hooning that's occurring down there, so I would be happy to see something like that happen. But generally, I support the recommendation from council in relation to item B. In relation to item C, it's not in my ward, but it does affect my residents, this suggestion that council investigate traffic calming measures on Green Camp Road between Manly and Molly Roads. This area was substantially upgraded recently with a big roads project, and a lot of Wynnham Manly people continue to travel into the Redlands every day. There are private schools in the Redlands, they drop off their kids there. They shop in the Redlands or work down there. And also, I've found a lot of people, older people, have their children living in the Redlands, and they go and see them using this road as well. I would not like to see traffic calming measures on this road. It's a major thoroughfare. It's a major thoroughfare between Brisbane and Redlands. And however, I think the SAM idea would be a good one. Unfortunately, this is a... the problem that's arisen here is, it shows what happens when you widen the road and provide a nice wide road. People tend to drive a lot faster, and I can understand some people being concerned about that, but I think the installation of a SAM sign there eventually would assist the problem that exists in the situation, and I look forward to that happening in due course. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I stand to speak on item A, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Morrison Government for their support in the delivery of this project, something as the local representative for the last 13 years on this major intersection, which has five large roads that lead into it, as councillor McGlocklin said, some major district connectors, but also a school right on the corner as well, and a rather big traffic generator called Bunnings as well. So it's an intersection that has caused issues for many, many years. We did a bit of a Band-Aid project within our budget, as was necessary about six or seven years ago now, with the turn-right arrow and the turn-right from Unum Road into Wecker Road, and changing some of the angle of the turn-left into Wecker Road, as well as you come around Bunnings. But they were only temporary, and it was only with the support of the Morrison Government and their money to come forward for this local project that we were able to deliver this, and I'd like to thank Ross Vasta for his support of this project. I think not only is it going to make it safer for the cars, not having the bumper-to-bumper ones where we have running up behind people who are turning right, waiting to turn right while others are going through, looking at the lights ahead, but it's important to note that this is a school that has very low capacity for parents to drive their kids to school, as councillor Cummings was just talking about in his area. So there is a very large, high... So, there is a very large, high proportion of students here who walk down from the local Mount Gravat East area to the school. So, for the pedestrians and the improvement of those crossings, it's an outstanding outcome for the students and the parents of that school as well. It doesn't help the parking of the school, but it does help the active travel of the school, which is probably a better outcome in the long run anyway. So, thank you very much, councillor McLaughlin, for the delivery of this project. I know there's been some hiccups along the way, but I am looking forward to the ribbon-cutting when it is finally finished. Thank you.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? councillor McLaughlin, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the Environment, Sustainability Committee report, the meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Before I address the report, I just wanted to briefly update the chamber on the Greenheart Fair held in Chirmside on Sunday. It was great to see the Lord Mayor and so many councillors out and about, enjoying everything that the fair had to offer. We estimate there were around 20,000 attendees at the fair on Sunday, a great result after, you know, the year of Covid. Our early post-event research suggests that over 40% of attendees attended the fair for the very first time. Many more and more residents are learning about ways they can be sustainable in their everyday lives. 3,000 native plants were given away to Brisbane residents at the fair. PAC Two was very popular. Councillor Howard and I were at that particular station, and the council marquee and the grow zone were the most popular sections at the fair. Our research also shows this year's fair had a 94% satisfaction rating from attendees, a great outcome, and a credit to the hard-working team who put the event together. Our committee presentation last week was on our waterway rehabilitation projects. The Shrinna Council is proud of Brisbane's position as Australia's most biodiverse capital city, and we are delivering projects to further enhance and grow our natural areas. Our waterway network is made up of 4,000 kilometres of waterways, and we invest in the maintenance and restoration of our waterways to improve recreation options, enhance natural ecosystems, and prepare for extreme weather events. We take a multi-pronged approach to improving water quality by managing Brisbane's built and natural waterway assets to minimise impacts from stormwater, and partnering with residents, community groups, businesses, industry, neighbouring local governments, and the Queensland Government to protect and improve our creeks, the Brisbane River and Moreton Bay. Our subtropical weather means our waterways need to be resilient to intense rainfall events and drought. The Natural Waterway Rehabilitation Programme takes a citywide approach to address threats to water quality, biodiversity, and public safety. In South East Queensland, improving water quality by reducing erosion and keeping sediment out of waterways in Moreton Bay is a priority to protect seagrass beds in the bay from being smothered. In the presentation, we heard about the science behind our waterway rehabilitation projects, and learned more in particular on our projects at Hanlon Park and Downfall Creek.
Point of order, Chair.
The presentation was timely.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
Sorry to interrupt. Will councillor take a quick question?
Councillor, will you take a question?
No.
No, no, please proceed.
The presentation was timely, as on the weekend, the Lord Mayor, together with councillor Cunningham and baby Franklin, officially opened the first stage of the major project at Hanlon Park at Stone's Corner. At the centrepiece of this project is the removal of the concrete channel, returning Norman Creek to a natural waterway. I also joined councillor Cunningham on Friday to have a bit of a sneak peek. It's an incredible space, and I know that the early reviews from local families have been absolutely fantastic. We have seen children exploring the new creek bed, interacting with nature, and getting their hands dirty. A key driver for projects like this is to encourage the community to better value and embrace our creeks, and at Hanlon Park on the weekend, families literally pulled out the picnic rugs and faced the creek, something which did not happen when it was a concrete drain. The project also has vast environmental benefits, improving water quality and the ecological habitat throughout the parkland. 462 trees will be replanted, as well as 43,000 shrubs and ground covers. We are improving connectivity through Norman Creek for fish, as well as creating habitat, and we are already seeing significant number of fish throughout the pools and riffles. The nature playground and Stage One are now complete, and works on Stages Two and Three are underway, scheduled to be complete early next year. Mr. Chair, we also have two petitions, and I'll leave debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the waterway rehabilitation item in the committee, and I must say, I was a bit disappointed I couldn't stick around for this, because I'm really interested in this area and I'm really passionate about this, and I want to congratulate the council administration for its really great work with Hanlon Park. That really is an excellent project, and I can't speak highly enough of it. I think, though, I would just point out that with a cost of $19 million, I think that's the total cost for Stage One. Maybe someone will correct me if I've got it wrong, and there are further stages on the way. I think it does raise a tricky question about how we can affordably take a similar approach with other creeks, because there are quite a few waterways throughout the city that I'm sure we'd all like to see restored. But this approach of engineering that I think we saw with this project might not be feasible on some of those others, and I would suggest that the council officers need to be given a little more leeway and flexibility to think a bit more creatively about how we can take a more organic and perhaps slow-moving approach to creek restoration. Sometimes you don't have to dig up an entire concrete channel all at once and undertake a major earthworks project. Sometimes, in some contexts, it can be better to remove a few bits of concrete, plant some riparian vegetation, and let nature take its course. It's a different kind of approach to landscape management, but depending on the creek way and the context, might be worth considering, because, yeah, there's a long list of creeks we'd like to see restored, but if each of them costs $40 million to do, it's going to be a while before that happens. I think Brisbane City Council's approach to waterway rehabilitation is, I guess, in a word, inconsistent, because on the one hand, we have great projects like Hanlon Park that are restoring concrete channels and creating new wildlife habitat, while delivering a lot of other amenity benefits as well. Yet, on the other hand, we have a really lax approach to enforcement around erosion and sediment control and clearing of vegetation on private properties. So, on the one hand, we've got council spending millions of dollars to restore certain sections of creek, and then at other points along waterways, we see developers allowed a lot of scope to clear vegetation, to clear established trees in corridors that really should be preserved as ecological hubs and wildlife corridors. So, in one part of the city, we're replanting vegetation and restoring a creek, and then literally further up, we might be clearing trees and destroying or degrading part of that same watercourse. And it gets even worse when you look at some of the larger development sites, where literally tonnes of sediment will be washed off the site over the course of a development project. All the vegetation and topsoil is removed, and then for a couple of months, as the developers muck around with the site, you see all that loose sediment, gravel, topsoil exposed and washed down into the stormwater drains every time there's a heavy storm. And I know council tries to do some enforcement and some monitoring of these sites, but from watching it firsthand and seeing how the officers respond to complaints, they're simply not doing enough. I could list a long, long list of developers and sites where developers have technically satisfied council's current requirements for erosion control, but large volumes of sediment are still being washed into the waterway. So, council will go out and inspect and say, yep, there's sufficient sediment control here, we're satisfied about the erosion prevention measures. And yet, when there's a heavy storm, we still see a lot of sediment washed into the waterway, and those heavy sediment loads choke our creeks, they contaminate our river. And if you talk to any ecologists who work in the waterway restoration space specifically for the Brisbane River catchment, they will identify erosion control as being their biggest concern, even more concerning than, for example, the sewage that sometimes gets flushed into the river after the pump stations get overloaded. And I think this is a problem of poor communication or competing priorities between news and the city planning and development team, where city planning and economic development really wants to support lots of development and wants to make things easy for developers and not throw up too many barriers for their projects. And meanwhile, news is really concerned because the clearing of all the vegetation associated with those developments and all the unmitigated erosion is destroying the very creeks that the news team are trying to restore. So, the balance isn't right at the moment in Brisbane City Council. The different teams in council aren't working together closely enough, and unfortunately, that means that in some cases, different teams in council are actively undermining each other's goals. And that's something that a lot of administrations struggle with. I think the state government does an even worse job of it, but certainly, council could be doing a lot better. It's been really saddening to me to see just how much dirtier creeks like Norman Creek get when there's a heavy storm. You can see that the watercolour changed very quickly, and that's erosion that's coming off, by and large, residential, medium-density and high-density development sites in places like Cooperu and Greenslopes, where developers are allowing topsoil to erode and wash into the waterway, and council officers either aren't doing a good enough job of monitoring and enforcing, or council officers are going out and inspecting those sites but are concluding that the measures that have been taken are sufficient. So, I'm not entirely sure whether we need stronger enforcement of the existing rules or whether we need a tightening of the rules. I think we need probably a bit of both. It seems like the existing rules and regulations covering sediment control simply aren't strong enough, but perhaps also, we need more resourcing towards proactive monitoring and enforcement of some of those sites. It's not enough for council to just say, oh, we'll wait until we get a complaint from a resident about topsoil being washed off a construction site. Council should be proactively going out and monitoring on a regular basis to make sure erosion is being adequately controlled, and I can tell you with confidence that certainly in a city, that's not happening. And my concerns about vegetation clearing, equally, the existing regulatory framework simply isn't strong enough. We're seeing council's development assessment and planning team allow the clearing of established vegetation, native vegetation, from private development sites on a really broad scale. And when we lose all that canopy cover, when we lose all those ground covers, when we lose all that native vegetation, that causes more erosion, that causes more contamination of our waterways, it chokes riparian vegetation, it smothers aquatic life, and leaves our creeks and river in a much worse state of health. So, once again, really excited about Hanlon Park, really, really pleased to see that there are other projects in the pipeline to rehabilitate some of those creek corridors that have been sadly neglected in the past, but the reality is that we can still do a lot better, particularly around erosion control, and particularly around vegetation clearing, but that we'll also have to think a bit more laterally about how else we can restore some of these creek ways, given that we're probably not going to have $40 million to do 20 for each other Hanlon Park-style project that we'd like to do around the city. I'd like to see hundreds of millions of dollars go towards creek and river restoration, but I guess that there may actually be value in putting some more money as well into those catchment groups, into the local community organisations that are already doing a lot of that work on the smell of an oily rag. I do wonder sometimes what the outcomes would be if we gave that $20 million to Norman Creek Catchment Committee and Belimba Creek Catchment Committee, and I do expect we might have gotten better value for money through some of those pathways. But, yeah, once again, really pleased to see that creek project happening, and I hope the subsequent stages can happen as soon as possible.
Further speakers? Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Welcome back, councillors. We have quorum. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? Any further speakers? councillor Davis, I will now, I'll now proceed, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
Point of order.
Now, I'm speaking. All those against, please say no. The ayes have it. We will now proceed.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Mr. Speaker, you ring the bells for less than 30 seconds there to prevent other speakers, and that is unreasonable. You clearly saw me running back in, and it is not reasonable that you don't ring the bells for an appropriate amount of time to allow us to come back from our offices.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. This is not an argument. This is, you made a point of order. No, we ring the bells to call quorum back, and that is what happened. And I don't, I don't accept your point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston just referred to you as being a joke. I believe that is unacceptable and inappropriate conduct, and I ask you to rule, please.
It's obviously unacceptable, but I didn't hear it, so we'll proceed. The next committee, please, the committee, no.
Committee on Health and Safety.
Health and Standards, please.
Yes, it's about.
councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey. The report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, there was a presentation on our council's Ashvelt Plan operations, which was extremely interesting, especially for some of the newer councillors who haven't potentially gone through some Ashvelt presentations previously. It gives us a really good outline of what the rubber meets the road, literally. I was also very pleased that I was actually out there on a site where they were actually physically doing the road resurfacing out there in Kingsley Parade in councillor Johnston's Ward, I think it is, where the officers were doing a actual physical resurfacing. So, it's really interesting to kind of see it from go to woe and how the officers work, so I really appreciate their hospitality. And the other thing was, we had a petition, which I'm happy to leave to the chamber for debate.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? councillor Marks, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. The Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers. The report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. We had a very interesting presentation from the CEO of the Powerhouse and about the Powerhouse's 21st birthday. And of course, as we all know, it is now Brisbane's home for arts, culture and creativity, and of course, celebrating 21 years. So, there's been lots of 21st birthday celebrations happening, and it's been fantastic to hear some of the stories of how this came about, but also to know that it attracts 700,000 visitors per year. So, it's a fantastic space for Brisbane's cultural and arts, and I really want to congratulate all involved. I particularly want to congratulate Valmai Hill for the work that she's doing as the Chair of the Board, and we look forward to another 21 years of Brisbane Powerhouse. And Chair, through you, there was also a petition requesting council install a public swimming pool in the Anala area, and I'll leave that for debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I rise to speak in regards to the petition and the response to the Anala community in regards to a pool that the community itself has been asking since the former one actually closed in, I think it was about 1996. There has been many petitions asking, over the years, there's been many petitions asking for the establishment of a publicly owned pool. The pools that have been in the area over the years, whether they be in the Forest Lake area or in the Anala area, were private pools. And so, I suppose I'm one of the very few wards that doesn't have a public pool in the ward, and I thought the response actually was not very, you know, it wasn't really, it wasn't really a proper response in regards to what the... response in regards to what the residents have been asking for, because they said basically that there is a pool at Carroll Park and there is a pool at Corinda. Now, the Corinda one is 5.3 kilometres away, and the Carroll Park one is 7.3 kilometres away. Now, for most communities, pools, not for all, but for most communities, pools are with reasonable walking distance or on public transport corridors, nodes. But especially the Carroll Park one, which has very limited public transport that goes out that way. They did have a couple of extra services, or more frequent services, I should say, back some years ago, but they were cut, which really disadvantaged the Carroll Park people in the residential areas, which is now called Ellen Grove. And hopefully councillor Ford, the Jamboree Ward, will look favourably on maybe advocating for better public transport. Anyways, the other one, of course, they suggest, which is closer, 5.3 kilometres, Corinda, but man, is that pool used. It is, you know, honestly, I reckon it's probably one of the most highly used pools in Brisbane, or one of them at least. And so the capacity to just take on another, you know, large influx of people and/or schools, right? Because quite frankly, a lot of our public pools, of course, are supported heavily by the schools in the area, and so they should be. But I just don't think there's that capacity. And really, you know, for the people that live in my ward, there's probably 90,000 to 100,000 people live in my ward, I think they deserve to be able to have a pool. And of course, the response basically was, you know, we have no plans for a pool, and we'll just take your comments on board. So I just want to reiterate that I think the council is doing my area or my ward a disservice by not considering we have two large tracts of land, four sporting precincts, one Waterford Road in the Forest Lake Ellen Grove area, and the other one in Pine Road, which is in the Richlands-Anala area. And both those very large tracts of land, you could certainly put a pool complex and some other sporting facilities in those spaces. So it's the case that we do have the land, there is space for a pool. And I think what quite amazes me is that the, I would have thought, because there's a lot of residential pools being built in and around my area, that that would sort of reduce the need or the demand. But if anything, I think it creates more of a demand. It's nice to have a pool in your backyard, but it's really also really great to be able to go out to a public pool and socialise with your friends and swim in a much larger pool, of course. So I'll leave my comments to that. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I just rise to speak on clause A, the presentation about the Brisbane Powerhouse's 21st birthday. And we would like to wish the Brisbane Powerhouse a very happy birthday on behalf of the Labor Team in the Brisbane City Council here. The Brisbane Powerhouse has been going from strength to strength since its conception under the Sawley Labor Administration in Brisbane City Council Chair. Former Mayor Jim Sawley and councillor David Hinchliffe had a vision, a vision to turn a derelict building into the centrepiece of performing arts here in Brisbane, a vision to make Brisbane a cultural city, Chair. The Brisbane Powerhouse is an institution this city can be proud of, a place where our brightest and most creative people can run free. It's a place to be educated, a place to laugh, cry, cheer and be awe-inspired, sometimes all in one night. Without the tireless work of Jim Sawley and Labor, this site would have been reduced to rubble. Surviving two decades of neglect and a partially completed demolition project, the Brisbane Powerhouse building was reacquired by council when Jim and his team began the redevelopment project. The Brisbane Powerhouse was designed by Brisbane City Council architect Peter Roy and was opened on 10th of May, 2000, by Jim Sawley. The industrial red brick facade, interior steel beams and cement floors are remnants of a once bustling power station and now much-loved centre for storytelling through the arts right on the Brisbane River. It's a beacon of culture on the banks of our great river, thanks to these Labor visionaries, Chair. Thank you and congratulations to Jim Sawley and David Hinchliffe, and I'd also like to extend our congratulations to the newly appointed CEO and artistic director Kate Gould. And a huge congratulations to the staff, past and present, and all those talented artists who performed there and showcased their work to the people of Brisbane at the Powerhouse. The building itself is magnificent, but the people inside it truly make it hum, Chair. So a very happy birthday to the Brisbane Powerhouse. Here's to many more years of it enriching our city's culture and helping residents and visitors alike make memories that will last a lifetime. Just in addition, Chair, could I ask that item B be taken seriatum for voting?
Seriatum, item B seriatum for voting. Any further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Cassidy for his comments, and particularly in welcoming Kate Gould to her new position. We're all very excited about that. I ran into Mr. Sawley as I was talking to some of the Powerhouse people, and we shared some reminiscences, and I had to say to him that Sally Anne Atkinson's recollection was that she had something to do with it as well. So I think that when we're, I think that when we're, we all know that any project takes a long time to come to fruition sometimes, and can I just say that it's thanks to all of the people mentioned by councillor Cassidy, but also to visionaries like Sally Anne Atkinson, who started the ball rolling. It's also fair to say that we've had some amazing people who've been associated with the Powerhouse over the time, and I think councillor Cassidy's comments reflect just how that building has been loved and grown. We've had many LGBTQ events happening there, and it's really become the home of the community in and around the inner city. So again, I add my sort of congratulations to the 21st, and certainly very much looking forward to welcoming Kate Gould to the chair. I'd also like to thank councillor Strunk for his comments, and I'd just like to sort of place on the record that the petition contained five signatures, and that currently there are 22 pools in the council's pool portfolio. Council is constantly reviewing the provision of pools in Brisbane, and over the past 12 years, has added new facilities at Runcorn, Mount Gravatt East, Morningside, Fitzgibbon and Parkinson. There has also been considerable funding provided to upgrade and refurbish facilities at Sangate, Bell Bowery, South Brisbane, Stones Corner and Runcorn in the last four years, and plans for the further investment at Newmarket, Spring Hill and Termside in the coming four years. So while council does not have any current plans for a new facility in Anala, we regularly review the network of pools and we consider the feedback from the community. So just wanted to place that on the record through you, Chair. And I'll leave that to the chamber.
I now put the resolution in regards to item A. All those in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. And in regards to item B, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division. Divisions. Called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cassidy. Please ring the bells. All right, councillors, all those in favour of item B, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any of those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and four against.
The ayes have it. The ayes have it on both items. We'll proceed to the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please. Councillor Allen.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang. The report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 25th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had a presentation that provided an update on council's 2021 employment programmes, and importantly, in these programmes, the HR team collaborated with the Economic Recovery Task Force to identify priority projects where people within these particular programmes could support some of the initiatives that were being progressed under the Economic Recovery Task Force. And I did actually want to touch upon the eight programmes that were featured in the presentation. These include the Apprenticeship Pathways Programme, the Graduate Pathways Programme, Emerging Capabilities Programme, Cadetship Pathways, Pre-Trade Work Experience, Tertiary Work Experience Pathways, Traineeship Pathways, and of course, a very important one, our Disability Action at Work Programme. Now, the Apprenticeship Pathways Programme targets those interested in gaining a trade qualification. Positions are temporary with a three- to four-year duration, depending on the nature of the trade. Currently, we have 33 participants in the 2020-2021 programme, and we have a completion rate in council of over 80% in our trade apprenticeships, which is well in excess of the national average of 56.2. We currently have 91 apprentices in council across 12 trades, with an increase of women participation from 16% in the 2019-20 year to 35% in the 2020-21 year, so a significant increase there. Now, the Graduate Programme targets recent university graduates, and they come in on a 12-month temporary placement. Council retained 15 out of their 18 graduates in the recent programme, and we currently have eight participants supporting economic recovery initiatives through supporting our bi-local programme, red tape reduction, building and construction, and supporting community groups. The third item, or the third programme, was our Emerging Capabilities Programme, and this targets people with particular skills in demand and supports building emerging workforce needs and skill gaps identified through workforce planning. And, you know, these are areas where potentially technology's moving quickly and we need specialist skills. One participant is commencing in June 2021 with a 12-month placement within the disciplines of project management and digital communications. The fourth programme, which is the Cadetship Pathways, targets penultimate and final year tertiary students, providing a 12-month temporary opportunity to work in council two days a week while studying. Currently, we have seven participants on a 12-month temporary placement, including four new indigenous cadets, supporting diversity and creating a pathway for indigenous youths to transition into council's graduate positions. The fifth programme is the Pre-Trade Work Experience Programme, which targets students completing a pre-vocational training course with a registered training organisation, and high school students who are seeking opportunities to try a trade. We have 117 participants in the programme to date. It's a 10-day programme, and it's targeting schools and registered training organisation and female-focused trade opportunities. The Tertiary Work Experience Pathway targets tertiary students, and it provides work experience across council for up to 30 days each calendar year. We have 64 domestic and two international students being paid in a range of capacities across council in this particular programme. The Traineeship Pathways Programme targets those interested in gaining a traineeship qualification, providing on-the-job work experience and training conducted by a registered training organisation. And this is a 12-month programme, and once again, is very well-supported. We currently have four participants, and trainees are directly involved in frontline services to the community, delivered through council's urban amenities unit and Brisbane infrastructure. Now, the last programme I wanted to touch upon is the Disability Action at Work Programme, which targets people with disabilities such as developmental, mental health, mobility, vision or physical impairments. The programme provides individuals with on-the-job paid work experience at 18 and a quarter hours a week across 16 weeks to compete effectively for jobs and gain self-confidence in managing their careers. We've currently got 33 participants undertaking work experience, and council provides sort of hands-on coordination, support, all the things that are needed to help coach these people in developing career skills and also helping them to develop career opportunities outside of council. In this particular programme, council has retained two participants to date on a full-time basis, and they are working across a number of areas within council. So these are all terrific initiatives of the Shrima Council that provide real opportunities to people in circumstances where they may not otherwise get a chance. And I guess, contrary to what councillor Cassidy would have you to believe, council is a highly regarded and award-winning employer. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Allen, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Adamant.
I have a petition requesting council install traffic calming and a safe pedestrian path along Pinjara Road, Pinjara Hills.
Any other petitions? May I please have a resolution to receive them?
Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Strunk, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? The Bengnun councillors, are there any matters of ordinary general business? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise tonight to speak in regards of the relaunch of the South West Chamber of Commerce, which occurred last night. It was a wonderful evening spent with approximately 100 different business owners, and these are the engine room of our local economy here in Brisbane. These are the small businesses, the family businesses, the people who put their heart and soul into delivering services in our local communities. And I want to pay a particular tribute to the executive of the South West Chamber of Commerce for putting this at the forefront, making sure that our relaunch, reconnect and recover event was a successful one. It was so important last night for everybody to come together, because for so long, these businesses have just been going from day to day. They've had it tough during the pandemic, they've had it tough recovering, and for them to come together and actually engage with each other, it was such a positive atmosphere. And the interesting thing was that when these business people arrived, they all started connecting, talking, networking. After the event concluded, they didn't want to go home, they wanted to continue connecting, networking and communicating. So it was a wonderful evening, and can I say that the impact that our Economic Recovery Task Forces had for those many small businesses has been acknowledged. So there's over 14,600 businesses, across businesses and organisations across our city that have had the benefit from the $18 million that the Shrima Council has invested in economic recovery, and this is not lost on all of those businesses. I would like to thank the council officer who attended last night from our Economic Recovery Division, and she was very well-received, and she certainly made her time there very fruitful, and she's got a number of connections, and will be going out and making more. and will be going out and making more connections with local businesses to help support them right across our local areas. So I say to all of those businesses who came last night, thank you for taking the time to come together to the South West Chamber. Thank you for the relaunch of the event, because relaunching the chamber is so important, and it was a privilege for me to support all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further business? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I rise just on one piece of business tonight, and it arose out of a comment that the, during question time, that the Lord Mayor made in regards to tip vouchers, that he indicated, he didn't indicate, he said that I put out a posting saying that I, we had run out of tip vouchers to give out, you know, those booklets, and my team were really incensed over that comment because they knew, because they're watching, they knew that that wasn't the case. They knew that they hadn't, we hadn't posted anything, and they went about checking just to make sure that that somehow it may have happened that we, you know, didn't remember. Anyways, they spent a bit of time just trawling through my social media posts, and quite rightly, nothing was ever posted. And if anyone knows my team, they know that they are a stickler for the rules when it comes to tip vouchers. My goodness, I know firsthand how much of a stickler they can be, because I've been corrected on a couple of occasions on what I thought were the rules. But if you have a look at AD one one four seven two, it clearly states, right, that you cannot give vouchers out if people have already used up their allocated yearly number. So I really would like to call on the Lord Mayor to apologise to myself and to the ward team for misleading this chamber. Now, I know it's not an offence to mislead, but I think it's appropriate that he apologise to my team who do not have a voice for themselves, right, other than through me. And, you know, I can take a, I can take a hit from the Lord Mayor, wouldn't bother me, but my team shouldn't have to have untruths told about what happens in the ward office. And I asked the Lord Mayor next week, because he's obviously gone for tonight, to make that apology. Thank you. Deputy Chair.
Any further business? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, I rise to speak on two matters. Firstly, Oxley Creek and Brisbane Waterway rehabilitation projects, and secondly, the council ward office telephones. I'm going to start with the council ward office telephones, because I can see councillor Allen sitting here. I don't know what this administration is doing sleepwalking through customer service, but the fact that this council wants to roll out a telephone service that reduces our offices down to one line and directs all incoming calls that can't be answered within twenty seconds to voicemail, anybody who thinks that that is a good system to operate under in a customer service environment has to have rocks in their heads. Now, when I was advised about this and sent the information last week, my staff brought it to my attention very quickly. They worked it out immediately how it would impact on our ward office. And I've taken the matter up with the senior council officers who look after us. But I am extremely disappointed that the corporate rollout of this telephone service, no one, no one conducted any trials in the ward offices. No one thought to come and talk to us about how our offices worked and what they might do. And if any LMP councillor thinks that it's a good idea to have one incoming line that can only be answered by one telephone and has to be answered within twenty seconds, if anybody thinks their staff deserve to operate under a system like that, then something is very wrong with them. So councillor Allen, through you, Mr Deputy Chair, there is a massive problem with the one-size-fits-all solution that you are trying to roll out across this council. Worse than that, today, because this new phone system's been put into my office, the IT guys told me a couple of weeks ago, yeah, yeah, all you've got to do is look up people and it'll give you the internal directory of all of the council offices. You can't do it. It's not actually installed on my telephone. So there is a huge problem with this system. It is not fit for purpose in ward offices, where we need to have multiple incoming lines and flexibility in where the phone is picked up, because I think most people have got job share in their offices, so there needs to be a fit-for-purpose solution. The solution that has been proposed for us does not fit. Now, after I sent the email up to the CEO's office last week, they announced that they would be pausing the rollout of the telephone service. I hope, though, that they are going to fix the problems, not actually just roll it out again in a week when they think we're not looking, because... Apparently, eleven LMP councillors were sleepwalking through this problem, by the way, before it got to my office. Apparently councillor Owen spoke up as well, so I guess they're out maybe doing her office the same day they said they were coming to mine. But it is a massive problem, and it needs to be fixed. We need to be able to provide a functional working environment for our staff that serves our constituents, because the problem won't be for someone like me. My residents know how to contact me. It'll be the brand-newbie councillors over there, who, when their constituents try and ring them and they get voicemail, they'll be going, oh, well, she's not interested in talking to us, or he's not interested in talking to us. So I'd just say you need to pay attention to your operating environment, because you are about to get done over by councillor Adam Allen and the corporate telephony team that are rolling out this inadequate and inappropriate project. Now, Brisbane Waterway Corridor and Oxley Creek. Earlier today, we had an adjournment, and the adjournment, generally when we come back from adjournment, that is, the meeting has stopped, and then we have a new meeting, the bells are rung for two minutes. Today, the bells were rung for about twenty seconds, and despite running back in here the minute I heard the bells, the chairman shut down debate on the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting to prevent me and councillor Griffiths from talking. And I'm sure councillor Sandy Landers is thrilled by how my act of graciousness in letting her stand up and move the adjournment was treated in retrospect, because I could have continued to stand up, I was given the call, and I could have spoken for ten minutes, but I deferred so she could do her job, and instead I was prevented from speaking. So let me put on the record right now what I was going to say, because it's not flattering. The greenwash that went in this presentation that I read about in the report before us today is astonishing. Oxley Creek is the largest tributary of the Brisbane River, and it is desperately toxic. Last year, it had one of its worst years on record. It is so toxic that there are readings of over twenty thousand in terms of the level of toxicity happening on a regular basis, when over five hundred, it's micrograms, I'm not a scientist, over five hundred is the standard for the risk of serious illness and transmission. Now, kids row on this creek. We've got canoe groups on this creek. We've got the sea scouts on this creek. It is toxic. Does it get a mention? No, it does not. What is this council doing to fix up the health of Oxley Creek, you might ask? Well, that's something that I also pay attention to. So a few years ago, council announced that it would undertake the Oxley Creek Transformation Project, and they promised a hundred million dollars over twenty years. And one of the six strategic projects that was being rolled out was restoration of the Waterway Corridor. Four years on, what's been done? Absolutely nothing. You know what has been done? A playground's been built down in Larapinta, and a new nature play area is being built in Archerfield. The toxic, polluted, poor state of Oxley Creek has been abandoned. There is absolutely no plans to do anything to fix Oxley Creek. And it is a shame, because it is Brisbane's biggest tributary. And when the health of Oxley Creek is bad, that feeds into the Brisbane River and that feeds out into Moreton Bay. We know that it is incredibly polluted because of the land use all the way along the creek, starting with the upper reaches where it is largely agricultural, but through a lot of residential and a lot of industrial, the more it heads down the creek. But what is this administration doing to fix it? Absolutely nothing. What is the Oxley Creek Transformation Company doing to fix it? Absolutely nothing. It is embarrassing that this council wants to stand up and tell everybody what a great job it's doing and pat itself on the back when, just a matter of a couple of weeks ago, this creek registered toxic levels of twenty thousand micrograms. I mean, so far in excess of what is allowable in terms of the health criteria, that it's laughable. And you know what happens? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. No one does anything. All we've got is my little bush care groups out there, planting trees, plugging away, doing their bit with tiny resources, and this council is doing absolutely nothing to fix the health of Oxley Creek. It did this presentation presumably to talk about how wonderful the Handland Creek project was. That's lovely. We have this little stretch of Norman Creek that's been returned to its natural environment, and I was shocked when I heard councillor Sri say it was, what, nineteen million dollars? And no one corrected him, so presumably that's wrong. Sorry, presumably that's right. And yet, nothing is being done to address the most toxic creek in Brisbane, the biggest creek in Brisbane. We're not seeing anything from the Oxley Creek Transformation Project, and I say through you, Mr Deputy Chair, to councillor Davis, perhaps she wants to get Mr Shammy Heer in and ask him, given she's interested and wants to pursue these issues of the Waterway Corridor programme, get him in and ask him what he's doing on one of his strategic priorities to restore the environmental health of this vital Waterway Corridor, because absolutely nothing is being done.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. And just as a point of clarification for yourself and other councillors, the bells ring until quorum, and it's of the firm view of councillor Wines and myself that the business of this chamber should not be held up for a tardy councillor. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I rise tonight to speak about my local Girl Guides, who recently turned fifty, to wish them a very happy birthday. So over ten thousand girls have been part of the Ginderley Girl Guides since they began in nineteen seventy-one, and district leader Judy Noble has been there every step of the way. We celebrated this important milestone with cake, of course, and an afternoon of fun activities for locals. But what I love about this organisation is its ability to let girls build confidence and connection, while also teaching them about serving the community. To the past and present, past, present and future guide leaders, thank you. Your efforts have and will continue to strengthen and shape the lives of young girls in our community. I love supporting Girl Guides, as they truly are the heart of our community. In other events over the weekend, I actually attended the Tamil School Family Sports Day at the ovals of St Tenere High. When I arrived, the spirits were so high, with the tug-of-war underway and teams chanting to get their team over the line. There were lots of fun events for young and old, and I'd like to shout out to councillor Sri, who participated in the relay, but fell short of picking up gold. This event was more than just a great opportunity to enjoy some sport in the beautiful Brisbane weather. It was a really important opportunity for this community to celebrate their culture, food and language. I would like to acknowledge and congratulate the organisers of this event in pulling it together, making it bigger and better after missing the event last year. Diversity deepens and enriches our community and plays such an important part in our city's prosperity. I am proud that our Shrima Council has been able to support this and many other important cultural community events in my local area through the Community Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further speakers? Councillor Adamin.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief, but I want to publicly acknowledge my colleague councillor Huang, who just celebrated his tenth year as councillor for the McGregor Ward. It was never going to be easy succeeding the previous councillor Graham Quirk, but councillor Huang has put his own mark on the role and done an outstanding job representing his community over the past decade. I have witnessed firsthand his popularity, and it's no surprise he continues to be comfortably elected as their representative in this chamber. I hope councillor Huang's next ten years in that role are even more successful than his first ten. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak about parkland in West End, and I particularly wanted to direct these comments to the deputy mayor and to the chair of news, or I guess the deputy chair of news. There was a bit of debate earlier about that particular park in the LGIP, and I I guess I've been feeling a little bit frustrated, because this park has been identified in the LGIP for years now, but because it doesn't have a specific location identified, it just keeps getting rolled over and postponed again and again. And we've suggested to news in the past, and I think to the city planning team as well, that the LGIP entry should be amended so that the location description is broader. Currently, the location description is near Montague Road, yeah, near Montague Road between Gray Road and Victoria Street, I believe. That whole area is character residential housing, and the Lord Mayor identified earlier that that poses challenges in terms of creating public green space. But the point I'm trying to emphasise, which I really hope the deputy mayor will take in good faith as it's offered, and that the news team will also take on, is that that LGIP description needs to be amended to encompass a broader area of West End. That will give the news project team the scope to look at other sites in other parts of West End that might currently be warehouses or commercial or industrial uses, or even vacant blocks of land, where it's a lot easier to create a new park. I'm not naive about how challenging it is to find space for parkland in an area's own character res, but the point is that it's open to the council administration to tweak that description of the LGIP park so that the location gives the news officers a bit more flexibility. And through you, Chair, deputy mayor, I hope that you'll pass this on to your team in infrastructure planning, and that councillor McGlocklin, I'm not sure if you have anything to do with it. I'm not fully across who gets responsibility.
Councillor Sri, can you direct your comments through the chair, please?
Through you, Chair, to councillor McGlocklin. I'm not entirely sure whether the infrastructure team has much say over the drafting of the LGIP in respect of parks, but there's an opportunity here to create parkland for the suburb of West End, which has seen some of the highest growth in south-east Queensland in recent years. We've had literally thousands of new residents move into that suburb, and happily, there are still existing sites available that could be converted into parkland. Many of those sites are also flood-prone, which means they're not particularly suitable for residential development. And rather than putting high-rises on a floodplain, where we saw those sites get flooded quite badly just back in twenty eleven, it would be better to acquire some of those sites for public parkland, which will also meet that very strong need for new green space in the south side. So council administration has acknowledged there's a need for a park down there. It's well documented. It's there in the LGIP. It's been identified as necessary for quite a few years, and the simple problem we have seems to be that the LGIP description says near Montague Road between Gray and Victoria Street. If that LGIP description is amended, for example, to say in the southern half of West End, or in the south-west side of West End, that will give those parks officers much more scope to be able to look at alternative sites. The mayor mischaracterised some of what I'd said earlier. I have been quite proactive over the years in suggesting to council officers other sites that they could look at when they come up for sale or when they become vacant, and unfortunately, council officers either say the land is too expensive or it's outside the area designated for this LGIP park. I don't think the excuse of the land being too expensive is particularly valid, given that the council is responsible for zoning decisions that determine land values, and so it's open to council to change zoning and thus make land cheaper and more easy for council to purchase. That's what council did with the Beranda Urban Common and the Carl Street Park in Woolangaba. Land was rezoned from residential back to parkland, and that lowered the land's value. And after that, council was able to buy that land and expand Beranda Urban Common, and it's a great public park now. Similarly, as I pointed out just the other week, council made some planning amendments to the city plan which reduced the development potential of Lamb House in Kangaroo Point and made it harder for that site to be redeveloped for profit. There again is that that's an example of council making rezoning decisions which lower the land value of a site. And so there's plenty of precedence for council making zoning changes that have the result of making land values lower. And there's plenty of precedent for council buying up sites to create parkland, and council's LGIP identifies that as necessary for that particular part of West End. And council's LGIP identifies that as necessary for that particular part of West End. My concern, which I think I've expressed pretty clearly on multiple occasions, is simply that unless council specifically identifies sites where the park could be created or alternatively creates a much broader LGIP definition that allows its offices to identify more sites for potential parkland, then that item is just going to continue to sit there in the LGIP with that $10 million figure next to it. And it'll be another decade or two decades or three decades before the area gets that green space that it so badly needs. It's 5,000 square metres. That might not sound like a lot of parkland to some of the outer suburban councillors who are blessed with a lot more public green space. But in the suburb of West End, we're now down to around eight or nine square metres of public parkland per person. So that's it for all those residents who live in apartments. They don't have their own private backyards. They don't have other forms of green space to access. I'll take that interjection, councillor Adams. And I think this is a reasonable question that you've raised in the past. Even when you include South Bank, the ratio of green space to residents is only about 10 square metres per person. And that compares very poorly to other suburbs. I think Cooperu was up around 30 or 40 square metres per person. South Bank is a great park, but it's a destination park for the whole city. It doesn't serve the same role as local public green space. And obviously, I think a lot of residents use and benefit from South Bank. But it's not somewhere where you can go and play a game of soccer with your mates. It's not even a particularly good space for kids to learn to ride their bikes, unfortunately. The paths are now so crowded and busy. So we do need local parkland other than South Bank, councillor Adams. No, when-
Councillor Sri, second reminder through the chair, please.
Oh, that's all right. I was responding to an interjection which you didn't pull the deputy mayor up on.
I realise that, but you still direct your comments through the chair.
That's fine. And I'd encourage you to, Chair, impartially.
I am being impartial. You can direct your comments through the chair.
Sure.
Councillor Adams, please. Councillor Sri, all your comments go through the chair.
Sure, through you, Chair. And I thought I've said that repeatedly. I'm directing my comments through you to the deputy mayor.
The last one, you've done it twice since you've started your GB.
Sure, I don't even-
And I've reminded you twice.
Sure, sure.
I've given you more remindings than I give my own children. So can you put it through the chair?
No need to be patronising. That's fine. Look, I'm simply emphasising the point that there is a shortage of public green space in the inner south side. It's not a confected or made up problem. It's not something that I'm going on about just to score political points. We saw just the other week that residents have concerns about that dog off leash area in Kangaroo Point. And while the council administration might try to use that as, I think, a poor example of consultation, the reality is that we don't have many spaces left for dog off leash areas because there's been so little new parkland created. In fact, I don't think Kangaroo Point has had any new parkland created despite a dramatic increase in thousands of residents and a lot of upzoning. So if the administration doesn't like it when residents complain about dog off leash areas being close to residential homes, the administration needs to recognise its own complicity in that problem in that you failed to create the new parkland that we need to deliver these community facilities. But the Kangaroo Point Rovers Soccer Club, it's running out of space for its teams. West End Football Club Soccer Club doesn't even have a field of its own. It's sharing with the Rugby League Club. We have tens of thousands of residents moving into a highly dense neighbourhood where they don't have their own backyards, they live in apartments and don't have access to private green space. So the need for public green space is even more important. Now, council's own documentation identifies that. And council has made a commitment to the public via its LGIP and via its city plans that it will deliver public parkland. It's there in writing from the council. It's saying to residents, look, we're going to deliver this parkland. So your administration has made a promise to residents. You've upzoned the area for high density development and you said, don't worry, we'll deliver the parkland to cater for that high density development. But now the development's come and you haven't delivered the public parkland. So you're breaking your promise to the people of Brisbane if you fail to deliver that parkland.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Sri, take a question.
Sure.
Councillor Sri, happy to take a question?
There's an opportunity to get parkland free out of developments that come from some of that higher density. Will you support those developments?
I'll take that question. I think it's a mischaracterised to describe that as free. Because what you're doing is giving the developer hundreds of millions of dollars of additional vertical real estate. If a site is owned for eight to 12 storeys and you approve development for 26 stories, that's not free. That's increased overshadowing over Davies Park. That's serious traffic congestion along Montague Road. And it's hundreds of millions of dollars in-
Councillor, sorry, your time has expired.
That's fine. Thanks.
Any further business?
Yeah, I'll rise to speak on another matter.
Councillor Sri? Can we reset his clock, please?
Yeah, just to restate that. I thought that was an interesting question from councillor Adams. And I've engaged with this discussion, so just on the topic of-
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order.
In accordance with the meeting's local law, it is a requirement that the speaker identifies what matter they're speaking on before they commence.
Yeah, I just did that.
I think councillor Sri identified that he was referring to a question that the deputy mayor asked him.
If the councillor- Councillor Owen was having difficulty hearing, just to clarify.
Councillor Sri? Can we have a bit of silence, please? Councillor Sri, when I'm talking, no talking?
Sure, you're right.
Can you direct all your comments through the chair?
Sure.
You've got the call.
Thanks. Yeah, so the issue I'm speaking about is development and green space. And I just wanted to clarify, no, Deputy Mayor, it's not the same topic.
Through the chair.
If people interject and you don't call them out, I mean, I get what you mean, but you're not calling them out when they interject.
That doesn't mean you do another wrong.
That's fine. That's fine. So there was an interesting question put to the chamber just before about whether it's acceptable to do deals with developers where we allow them to build significantly higher than the neighbourhood plan allows in order to secure a small amount of public parkland. And I've looked closely at that and I understand the arguments for and against it. In terms of that particular development that's proposed for Davies Park, it seems the developer is proposing to hand over around 4,000 square metres of parkland. I'm sure the deputy mayor will correct me if I've got that wrong. But the trade offs or the negative impacts don't justify that. And that's because that development will generate significantly more traffic congestion on Montague Road. It will overshadow the existing Davies Park. It will-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
This is the same topic he was talking about in his previous 10 minutes. You cannot speak for 20 minutes in GB just because he's answering a question from the previous 10 minutes. I ask you a ruling on this.
I'm speaking about a development project now. I was speaking about the West End LGIP park before. I'm not speaking about that LGIP park now. It's a different topic. If you- Look, I'm quite satisfied that it's a different topic, but I'm-
I'm quite happy to let him go, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so-
Councillor Sri, please continue.
Just returning to the development application regarding Davies Park. The other concern with that particular project and the reason that it's not a good value proposition for council is that by locating that high rise essentially in the middle of a park with public parkland on three sides, that adjoining parkland becomes yet less usable for the general public. I think most councillors would know that public parkland that is immediately adjacent to residential homes, whether those are low density houses or apartments, that parkland is less usable for community events, for noisier recreation activities, et cetera. So it's not enough, as the mayor has said in this chamber in the past, to look purely at the square meterage of park. It is also important to look at the quality of parkland provided. And with that particular development at 297 Montague Road, the proposition is to squeeze in what I would describe as a dinky sliver of parkland on one side of the tower. And then the tower is also overshadowing the main soccer field. And then there's a little bit of green space on the other side. That configuration of parkland associated with that development doesn't represent a good deal for the city, particularly when we acknowledge that the developer is getting an additional 14 storeys of vertical real estate. So I ask the other councillors in this chamber to think about how you would feel if a developer was seeking to build on a site 12 storeys or 14 storeys higher than the neighbourhood plan allowed. This particular site in question is owned for development of eight storeys on one side of the site and 12 storeys on the other part of the site. The development application is for two towers of up to 26 storeys. Two towers of up to 26 storeys on a site where the transport network is already severely congested and introducing hundreds of additional cars to that Montague Road corridor is going to cause severe issues, not just for motorists, pedestrians and cyclists, but also for council's Blue City Glide bus route. So I don't think that's a good proposition for people of Brisbane. And I think it would be better if council simply coughed up the money to buy the land for new public parkland rather than to do what I would describe as perhaps questionable deals with private developers. We've seen council find hundreds of millions of dollars for road widening projects. We saw previously, I think it was $120 million spent widening in a short stretch of Litton Road in East Brisbane. $650 million spent widening in a stretch of road along Kiggersford Smith Drive. Those projects worth hundreds of millions of dollars, yet council says it can't find the money for a couple of new public parks. I think the priorities of this administration need to be more closely examined. And we need to ask ourselves whether it's really a good use of money to be spending so much money widening roads and then saying to inner city residents, sorry, there's no money for parkland. Actually, what ends up happening is that those inner city residents just drive further out to access parkland in other areas. And then we have councillors in the middle suburbs and outer suburbs complaining that there's not enough parking in their parks because residents from the inner city are driving out there to access those parks. If you provided better parkland and community facilities and amenities in the inner city, you wouldn't have those inner city residents driving further out to access public parkland and contributing to that problem of traffic congestion as well. So there's a pretty straightforward principle of sustainable planning which says that you should locate the services and amenities people need to use on a daily basis close to where people live. We shouldn't have to have a situation where inner city residents living in high density developments have to drive two, three, five, 10 kilometres out to access public parkland. They should have that within walking distance. That's how you create cohesive livable communities. And if we do that, then we won't have those problems of traffic congestion. Then we won't have those issues of parking stress on outer suburban public parks. And we'll have a whole bunch of inner city residents who can have access to green space and a high quality of life close to where they live, which in turn supports the council's strategy of densification of the inner ring suburbs. So what I'm asking for is not unreasonable. It's well documented and backed up in terms of the literature. It's a good approach to urban planning. As I said right at the start, there's a problem of rapid development and densification in the inner city of Brisbane. And this council administration needs to grapple with that rather than pretending that it's not a problem or claiming that residents can just rely on South Bank because that's already there and that's enough.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Is there any further general business? No. Before we close out, can I please extend a personal thanks for all councillors who helped promote the 65 roses this month? I can happily report that 65 roses in Queensland did reach their target for this month. So thank you for your contributions. Declare the meeting closed.